She is a kindergartner at Catherine Finch elementary and has one older brother. And today is also her sixth birthday. London is very outgoing and intelligent and enjoys doing art in a multitude of medias. Her favorite animals are giraffes and her favorite color is yellow. That's my favorite color too. All right, London, take it away. Get the microphone on.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, London. And London, we give, I give thank you cards to all of the students that come in, but this one's extra special because it's got happy birthday wishes from all of the city council in it. So happy birthday, London. All right, city clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Absolutely. Councilmember DeHart.
Here.
Councilmember Hosage.
Here.
Councilmember Middleton.
Present.
Mayor Protem Bernstein.
Here.
Mayor Gardner.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. We're going to begin today's meeting with a few presentations. We're going to start off with an update about tropical storm Hillary and I just want to say thank you so much to our incredible city staff, our police department, our fire department for the work that they did to prevent this from being a lot worse. And I really just appreciate all of our residents as well. You know, we asked you to stay off the roads and you did. And it just really made me feel so good to see everybody helping each other at the sandpit as well, filling sandbags, getting sandbags for neighbors, checking in on each other. And as you'll hear in the presentation, we just had so few incidents in the city of Palm Springs. I was really proud of our entire community for everything that we all did to stay safe. So take it away, city manager.
Thank you, mayor, members of council. We did have a brief presentation we wanted to go through for the benefit of the community to get a little feel for the after action of activity that took place before, during, and after the storm. We're going to have our fire chief, Chief Alvarado, who's going to join us via Zoom, and he's going to cover a few slides, followed by our police chief Mills. Our EOC coordinator, Daniel DeSelm, is going to follow up with a couple of slides and then I'm going to wrap up with a few things at the end myself. So at this point, I'd like to just turn it over to the monitor and we'll hear first from Fire Chief Alvarado.
Good evening, mayor and to council. While I couldn't be there tonight, unfortunately, I'm feeling a little under the weather, no pun intended, but I'm compelled to brief the council and the mayor tonight on the outstanding work that your fire department did during the tropical storm. And I'll tell you, I've been in the fire service for 30 years and I have never worked with a group of personnel that are so hardworking and well-trained as your Palm Springs firefighters. I call them Palm Springs bravest, but they're simply the best. So I have to move on to the slideshow. So just starting off with the slide, slide number one here, I just wanted to tell everyone a little bit about the photo here. To me, this is the front cover of a Time magazine. This is one of our fire captains, Ron Skyberg, and this incident is actually in Cathedral City. This is one of the 18 rescues performed by our firefighters that night. As you can see, this work is technical, but it's also very physical. Our firefighters were out all night. This in particular was over numerous hours performing these rescues. Next slide, please. The preparation for a storm like this begins long before the rain even begins on the forecast. Your Palm Springs firefighters are trained to the highest level of swift water training. We also received assistance from the Master Mutual Aid System from an Oakland Swift Water Rescue Team. Pictured on the lower right, you'll see our firefighters and our Oakland team working together. The picture on the lower left shows us briefing that team, ensuring that everyone knew where all the hazards were in the city of Palm Springs and that we were all ready, prepared to respond to the team together. At the top left, you'll see photos, as the mayor mentioned, our unbelievable city, our unbelievable residents, our business community. I couldn't be more proud of how engaged this community is and came together. This is a picture of one of our fire stations where we've handed out over 70,000 sandbags to residents and business community members here in the city. Unbelievable preparation, our community. At the top right, this is another image here. We were on the fly as a city team, getting more sandbags, getting delivered. This is a picture of one of our firefighters as we unload a pallet of sandbags. And I know that our emergency manager, Daniel DeSelm, is going to speak tonight, but I just want to really thank him on the work that he did and I'm happy to have him on my team. I'll also talk about our communication team. Our community informed through social.
Chief, we lost you there.
I hope everyone can still hear me.
We can hear you now.
Social media and our communication team did an outstanding job. I want to thank Denise Goolsbee, Amy Blaisdell, and of course, my fire captain, Nathan Gunkel, for working tirelessly to ensure that our community was constantly and consistently updated with the latest information. And finally, our city leadership, how we came together. We activated our emergency operations center and made a major decision very early on to shut down the major roads at the washes and without a doubt, this slaps. Next slide, please. And finally, on our third slide, it's just images of our was doing the work that evening. We performed from August 19 through the 21st, 148 emergency calls for service. 61 of them were storm-related, 18 were rescues in our city, three were structured fire calls, and 12 pipeline calls, as well as two traffic accidents. Very busy a couple of nights, but again, thanks to the leadership and I want to thank Scott Stiles for his leadership from leading from the front. I couldn't be more proud of a city manager like that. And again, your Palm Springs firefighters and Randy Mills, again, the unbelievable, unbelievable teamwork from your public safety, as well as the rest of our city departments.
Okay, thank you, Chief Alvarado. Now I think we have Police Chief Mills is going to make a few comments.
Yes, guess what, some technical problems tonight. Good afternoon, and I think we're still afternoon, mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members. I'd like to completely agree with Chief Alvarado, an incredible effort by all of city staff. It wasn't just public safety, but streets, public works. I mean, everybody was full steam all weekend long. We're going to highlight a few things, but I just really want to recognize all of our colleagues in the city and our community, as was pointed out. So this is three stages for us. First of all, was preparing for the hurricane, the after effects of the hurricane. You could see it rolling in and I think all of us knew that it was going to be a pretty significant event for us locally here and trying to contingency plan for maybe not a whole lot, but at the same time, if it did rain as it was forecasted, it could have been catastrophic for our community. So we were fully prepared. We put all of our staff on call and told them to prepare to come to work for 48 hours straight if needed. And so everybody was at least informed and ready to go. The first discussion was shutting down the roads in the flood-prone areas. We know there are four locations in the city that even if you get a small amount of rain or a little bit of wind, it's going to flood or blow over. So the decision was made fairly early with the city manager, as well as the roads, street department, to shut down those locations. I think that that was, in retrospect, one of the key elements in us not having to do a lot of swift water rescues, as well as other problems that could have occurred. So really want to, again, thank the team for that. Looked at a lot of different scenarios, shut it down now, shut it down at midnight, shut it down tomorrow when it rains. And the decision was made to shut it down at midnight and that, again, helped immensely. We did a few other things to prepare for it. One is we warned all the homeless individuals in our community. It's a vulnerable, vulnerable population that we care for. And so we went out on foot into all the locations. We know where the homeless reside, as well as had the sheriff's helicopter come over and broadcast and send a drone out with a speaker to broadcast that seek higher ground. Many did, a few stayed, and then we went and made sure that those people clearly understood the risk they were taking by staying where they were. And ultimately, almost everybody sought higher ground or shelter, which we were very grateful for not having to problem solve that. We also contingency planned for three other things. One is community rescues. What would that look like if we had to go and rescue people out of homes, off of roofs, out of attics with the fire department? Obviously, fire would take the lead, but a lot of times it'll take our staff also. So that was all planned and prepared for in advance, including with our communications division. We also need to prepare for if things went bad, to have potential looting. And so we put resources in place to make sure that we were prepared to respond to it. Fortunately, we had zero of problems that way. And then there are other vulnerable populations, such as elderly people in our city. We're known for a fairly elderly population and so we were completely prepared for that as well. The impact, we used drones, and you can see a picture of our drone in the photo there, to do damage assessment and search for stranded motorists. It was very helpful to have that sent it out in Indian Canyon, Ginatri, Vistacino. We could get way out there and check the places that you just couldn't go physically. So we felt really good about that. Difficult thing, and of course, when things go bad, they can go really bad. So we had our 911 center get knocked out completely. We lost all telephones and we lost all the radios at one point. And so the city manager, the fire chief, myself, were all in there till pretty wee hours in the morning, speaking with people in Orlando, Florida, trying to get everything back up and running. And I'm happy to say that our brilliant dispatchers found a way around it and we were able to move all of the calls, 911 calls, to a phone, single phone, in our records bureau and then transfer that over to their phones. So they found a way around it and it actually worked well until we could get the thing back up and running, which was about 3 o'clock in the morning before we got it to a place where it was successful. The storm damaged the radio system by knocking out a tower and a train took out the 911 trunking cables, what we found out. So it was an interesting few minutes. And then officers, staffed the road closures and worked around the clock for many, many hours, you know, pulling double shifts. And when you're pulling a double shift and it's a 10-hour shift, you're up for a long time. And they were able to do it. We actually had dispatchers sleeping in the call center on cots because they didn't want to go home, they wanted to stay there and fight it out. And then our response, again, we closed the four locations, staffed up emergency response, and then ready the building and all of our equipment for a potential disaster. My wife and I were on the roof of the police department clearing off branches and throwing them over the side because that gets clogged up pretty easily, as well as some other staff members. And it was interesting to see everybody pull together citywide and work with one another to make sure that this is, continues to be one of the safest communities in the desert. And so we're very proud of all of our community members and our elected officials, who I saw out there a lot also. So thank you.
Thank you, chief. And next up is our emergency operations center coordinator, Daniel DeSelm, who will go over a few things.
All right, good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. It's been a while since I had to present in here. So as both Chief Alvarado and Chief Mills have talked about, Hillary was an unprecedented storm. It was the first tropical storm to hit Southern California in over 80 years. It dropped almost a year's worth of rain in one day. We heard the impacts that it had on our 911 system, our radios, a lot of our communications equipment, and it really turned the desert in Palm Springs into an island. So what I'm going to cover is just a few slides of the aftermath, which was the biggest thing that still impacts us is road damage. But it was the decisive action by staff and our elected officials that really kept everybody safe. We had no loss of life due to this storm, which was extremely, extremely surprising. So this is some images of Ginatri at the wash. Most of these roads, it was about a quarter mile length of road that was buried under debris and mud. As you can see, five feet deep for a quarter mile. It took over 250 staff hours to clear that road so it was trafficable. So when people are very excited about getting the roads open very quickly, it takes a lot of time to push dirt off of the road and try to make it safe for the community again. So 250 staff hours spent on Ginatri Trail. Indian Canyon at the wash. Obviously, Indian Canyon's still closed. When we were doing our assessments, it was 1,800 feet of road that was damaged and under debris as we started to clear it and got an actual scope of the damage. We made the decision to stop clearing the road because we knew it was going to be trafficable, it was unsafe, and we were going to have to rebuild it. So we only spent 90 hours clearing debris before we realized just how bad it was. On the plus side, that did let us clear Vistacino and Ginatri a lot faster. And here's an image of Vistacino at the wash. It was under two and a half feet of mud and debris. We're actually surprised that that didn't have any major and significant damage. It took 100 staff hours to clear that road, just to make us not an island anymore so we could get from here to Cat City. One of the biggest things that really impressed me was the community that really came together. The kindness and compassion that I saw was heartwarming. I was hearing a lot of negative comments from peers of mine in other cities around Southern California with things that did not happen in Palm Springs. We had a lot of neighbors helping neighbors, young, capable people filling sandbags for our older community, actually jumping in cars with them to go to their house and actually put sandbags out for them, and then hitchhiking back to City Hall to fill more sandbags. It was, it was an amazing thing and our, our communities were helping each other, made the job of our first responders easier. And one last thing that I wanted to mention before I close out is Governor Newsom did officially request presidential disaster declaration today. So we're just waiting on the White House to approve that and then, not that that's going to expedite getting the road fixed, but it will expedite funding for the road.
Thank you, Daniel.
Thank you, Daniel. Just a couple other comments I wanted to make if we could put up the next slide. We are laser-focused on trying to get Indian Canyon Road open as quickly as possible, and we wanted the community to know that there is a significant effort underway to receive funding to rebuild Indian Canyon. You saw the one photo of the washout of that road, and it's, it is significant. We wanted to highlight for the community that the Coachella Valley Association of Governments has applied for a local transportation climate adaptation grant. We have been pushing that effort very strongly. We've asked for $15 million to do an elevated roadway bridge project over Indian Canyon that will get that back open, so we don't have to go through these closures over and over again. It will consist of two bridges, as you can see from the slide, of low-water crossings on Indian Canyon Drive. We expected, would like to have, two miles of solar-shaded bike path included as part of that, and it's so important to remember that that arterial links Desert Hot Springs with our community, and importantly, with Desert Regional Hospital, our trauma center. So it's a critically important roadway for us. It'll include a couple miles of sand fencing over by where the Amtrak Palm Springs Station is, that we think will be a big help for also Amtrak service at that location. Total project is $75 million with additional funding from SEVAG. We expect to hear in December if we're going to be recipients of that. And I know council members, we appreciate all of your actions to try and help lobby for that funding. It's been really important, and several of us are going to be in Sacramento next week to continue to push harder for that. Just the next slide, you can see we've had, you know, I want to thank Mayor Garner, Council Member Middleton, for really lobbying strongly with Governor Newsom when he showed up that Sunday morning to get an analysis from us on what we were going to expect during the, during the storm. You can see Congressman Calvert was out at the wash area, and we've asked him for additional funding at the federal level to assist with the rebuild. So it was, it was really a team effort, and we're going to continue to push as hard as we can for all funding that we can get to get that open as quickly as possible and properly rebuild it. The last slide that I wanted to show to the community is the letter that we worked with with SEVAG that is jointly signed by Mayor Garner, Council Member Middleton, and the Mayor of Desert Hot Springs, Scott Mattis, to lobby for this funding additionally. And we've had also support from Coachella Valley and other desert cities who all recognize the importance of this particular arterial, so we're going to work as hard as we can to kind of keep this on the forefront of what, of, for the importance that we know that this project has. So with that, council member, council members, that's the end of this presentation, and we wanted to just share this with you and the community. We're available for any questions, or we're also available to move on to the next presentation.
Thank you. Does council have any questions or comments on this? Council Member Middleton.
I want to thank, most importantly, everyone who resides in Palm Springs and for all of the cooperation that you gave us over the course of this storm. It was the public's cooperation that made such a difference. But our staff, from firefighters to street repair people, to IT, to the police department, to everyone that I'm not naming right now, our hats are off to you. What you did over the course of those few days was a demonstration that government can work, that it does care, and that we do make a difference when catastrophes strike. On the bridge that has been proposed for Indian Canyon, that work started following the St. Valentine's Day storm, when all of the cities in the Coachella Valley came together through the Transportation Committee and the Executive Committee to say we needed to change our strategy going forward, and it was the unanimous cooperation of every city in the Coachella Valley. So I'm really proud of the work that we did in Palm Springs. I am equally proud of the cooperation that we're receiving from every other city in the Coachella Valley as we move forward. We've submitted an application. We will learn in December whether or not we are successful. We're competing with a whole lot of other cities that have also had catastrophe strike during the course of this year, but we're making a very strong proposal. I do want to say that the mockups that most people have seen in the newspapers and on the media is a, is just that, it's a mockup. It is not a final design, and one of the things that we recognize very clearly, it's not just rain, but also blow sand that we have to address. And before we get to the final engineering drawings, we will have addressed the issue of blow sand when it comes to the Indian Canyon Bridge, so. Again, thank you to everyone. Lastly, I think it would be helpful if we could get the city of Palm Springs taking a formal action to request the funding and have that be brought to us at the next council meeting.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Council Member Holstich.
Thank you, and thank you to Council Member Middleton for your leadership on the Indian Canyon Bridge project and so many other transportation projects. I know you've been working on those for six-plus years, and we really appreciate your advocacy. I just wanted to echo my thanks to city staff, really appreciate you. I was able to go by a fire station, the police station, Public Works, and the streets team, and just meet some folks who worked incredibly hard over the last few weeks, really, to clean up, to keep the city safe, to clean up the city, and it's just amazing what our city staff can do. People came from long distances, roads were closed, they still found their way to work. People work 30-plus hour shifts for the dispatch center and so many other places. I mean, the amount of sand and mud and muck that Public Works and Streets Team managed is just truly impressive. We are a tiny little city, and it's really amazing to see what our staff was able to accomplish, so thank you. And I wanted to give one more thank you to our mayor, who, I'm going to ask you just to say how many interviews you did, if I can, Madam Mayor, who did dozens and dozens of interviews, if you have a final tally.
I didn't count, but I think it was over 20 in the course of like 36 hours.
20 interviews, national news stories. I know you weren't sleeping very much. I know you also had a planned trip that you canceled to then stay at City Hall and shovel sand and fill sandbags for residents, and you were incredibly hands-on, and I'm just amazed by your leadership, and I don't think we could have had a better mayor and spokesperson for the city than you and the leadership you displayed during the crisis, truly. So thank you so much for all your work you did for all the residents. I know we all appreciate it.
Any other comments?
Jeffrey agrees with everything. All right, thank you. Thank you for those kind words, and again, just the incredible work in the community. And one thing we haven't mentioned is our interim superintendent, Tony Senore. He did the best thing that we could have asked for, and he closed school for three days. I cannot tell you how important it was for us to not have school traffic on the road for three days. It made a huge difference for our teams and just getting things done, and not even just for Palm Springs, but for the, you know, for Rancho Mirage, Cathedral City. It made a huge difference, and, and he was, he was willing to close it for longer if we needed, and I really appreciate that leadership. So thank you again to all of the city staff. Some of you slept at City Hall with your families so that you could stay and help, and we really, really appreciate all that you do for us. And with that, we will move on to our Airport Master Plan.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, now I'd like to introduce our Airport Director, Harry Barrett, to come up and give us a, an update. We're embarking on a very important update to our Airport Master Plan, and I'd like to have him and his colleagues, who he can introduce, let us know a little bit about that work.
Thank you, Scott. And thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. We're going to be pretty brief, or try to be pretty brief, but we wanted to provide you with an update, and the public with an update of the master plan that's been underway. The FAA recommends that the airports complete a master plan process every seven to 10 years, so we started one in February of this year. It was scoped to be a 30-month process. We are a few months into it, but we've reached some critical milestones with that master planning process. And I just wanted to provide context for what we're attempting to do here. So we're trying to find solutions to current capacity problems and operational constraints related to the airport that can be funded by FAA funds. We're trying to ensure that the campus is modernized to meet future needs. We're trying to incorporate sustainability where possible and other initiatives to improve services to passengers and to the community, and we're trying to meet future development goals to ensure that city policies are incorporated into the planning process. The master plan has been guided by a working group, which consists of four airport commissioners, three city department heads from sustainability, engineering, and IT, and five airport executive staff. As I mentioned, we've reached the point in the process where we've come up with initial alternatives for conceptual design of the terminal and landside, which was phase one of the process. We'll be discussing the technical analysis that fed the recommendations next Tuesday at an open house at the Palm Springs Convention Center. But right now, Mr. Ryan Hayes from Eden Hunt, he's our senior consultant on this project. He's going to give a presentation on the alternatives. So I'll turn it over to Ryan.
Thank you, Harry. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for listening. We've done a lot of work on this master plan, so it's fun to, to share some of the progress with you all. I do have some drawings of some conceptual layouts of what the terminal and terminal facilities could potentially look like in the future, so I'm going to get to those as fast, as, as fast as I can. I'm going to try to keep this to 15 minutes. I'll go over some background slides really quickly, but I want to get to those concepts. And as Harry said, we're going to be sharing those with the community next Tuesday, and there will be an opportunity for the community to weigh in and provide the consultant team and airport staff with some input at that time. I also want to give a huge thank you to airport staff. You have a tremendously professional airport staff. Harry and Jeremy and his team have been extremely helpful to us as consultants, and it's been a really fun project to work on. So the FAA recommends the planning process follow these four kind of main pillars, the pre-planning pillar, the investigation stage, both of those we've completed. We're moving into the solutions phase at this point. And then the fourth pillar is the implementation phase. How much is all of this going to cost, and how are we going to pay for these projects? As Harry mentioned, the schedule is approximately 12 months. We're about halfway through that, and we've really focused all of our efforts on the terminal and the immediate surroundings of the terminal to start. Once we have a terminal solution determined and approved by you all, then we'll move into planning the rest of the airport. So a little bit of history, I won't go through every item on this timeline, but I will note that we're dealing with a 1966 historic terminal that was designed before a lot of these changes have happened in the aviation industry. So we do recognize the historic nature of the terminal, we do recognize how important it is to the community, and we're going to do everything we can to preserve it and, and make it the best it can be. I'll also note that the airport's gone through planning processes multiple times in the past, and a lot of the major improvements have followed a master plan. The air traffic control tower, terminal expansions, the runway extension, those major projects usually result from a, a planning process. The study area for the terminal focus is shown on the left side of this slide. The right side of the slide is the, is a zoom-in of the two concourses, the Bono concourse and the regional jet concourse. There's approximately 18 gates at these two concourses, and I'll talk a little bit in a minute, but that's not enough gates. During the busy, busy season and during the peak hour, the airport, all, all 18 of those gates are used at once, so. The growth has been tremendous. This chart shows employment growth at the Palm Springs Airport. The FAA defines employments as one passenger boarding one aircraft. So you have to double the employment number to get to total passengers. So in 2022, for example, the airport accommodated 1.5 million employments, which is, which calculates to 3 million annual passengers, so the, the terminal facilities had to accommodate 3 million passengers in that one calendar year. Each of these blue bars indicates some kind of industry or economic recession, and the Palm Springs Airport just bounces right back. Obviously, COVID was no example. The airport has, has fully rebounded from COVID and then some. Obviously, the airport's very seasonal, so this is just a chart that shows how, how much more traffic there is in the winter season versus the summer season. Our forecasts of aviation activity at this airport have that 1.5 million employments growing to over 3 million employments by the end of the 20-year planning period, so six million, by 2042, we're anticipating the airport having to process 6 million, potentially up to 6 million passengers per year. The other thing that's important in terminal planning is the peak hour. When do the, all the airlines schedule their flights? What time of day? And this chart indicates it's all around the noon hour. So that noon hour, as I mentioned before, is the busiest time at this airport, and it's when we have 17 to 18 commercial aircraft on the ground during the peak season. All of that information goes into our facility requirements. We have this level of service concept that applies to other facilities that the city owns, but basically, we're trying not to under-design, but we're also trying not to over-design. We're trying to find that optimum level of square footage and, and queue times with terminal facilities that we plan. This chart, I just added a dark arrow to call your attention to the peak hour. Again, 17 aircraft on the ground, all at gates at one time. We're anticipating that to grow to 31 by the end of the planning period. The previous master plan for this airport recommended no additional gates, and there's various reasons why, but the bottom line is the airport's a little bit behind the curve now, and we need to start planning for more, more facilities to accommodate this growth. This is just a summary slide of the requirements. I won't go through all the numbers, but I'll call your attention to the bottom line. The airport is approximately 300,000 square feet of terminal facilities, and that needs to grow to over 600,000 by the end of the planning period to fully accommodate the demand we project coming. So this is just that same information in another chart showing gates and square footage and how they're projected to grow over time. Parking is obviously another consideration, and we forecast parking demand for public spaces, rental car spaces, and employee spaces. The busiest parking time is December, but we plan for the average day of the peak month, which is, which is March. So all of that information is the background information, and we've developed four terminal concepts that I want to show you all and that we want to present to the community next Tuesday at the open house. So the first, oh, before I mention that, I want to, I want to mention the amount of outreach we did to, Harry mentioned the working group. We also talked to everyone who lives in this terminal. We talked to the airlines, the car rentals, the TSA, the concessionaires, everyone who has to go to work in this building every day, and we got their input about what they like about the terminal, what they don't like, where the pinch points are, where more square footage is needed. Things we heard were that, obviously, the mountain views are important, the indoor-outdoor unique nature of the indoor-outdoor space is vitally important at this airport. Consideration of walking distance for future facilities is obviously important as well, so that's just some of the input that we heard. We essentially took three approaches to planning terminal facilities. We took a maximum reuse approach, which reuses existing facilities to the greatest extent we can. We looked at a partial reuse approach and a full replacement terminal facility concept in Approach 3. So under that first approach, this concept 1A is called a peer expansion, and the most notable change is, is that the regional jet concourse goes away, and you develop a, what's called a peer, a peer and you develop a, what's called a peer concourse with aircraft parked at both sides. This concept also includes a consolidated rental car deck, shown in orange on the left side of the chart, and then the surface parking is shown in yellow. And then, I'll also note that we're including, at airport staff's direction, a federal inspection facility in these planned future terminal facilities to accommodate the potential for international flights. That's one concept. Alternative 1B is very similar to that. We call this the Bono expansion, just because we're tearing off of the existing Bono concourse in a linear fashion, parallel to the runway, but very similar to Alternative 1A. The Conrak rental car facilities are to the north. Surface parking shown in yellow in other areas. Alternative 2 is a little bit more dramatic change. This concept removes both the regional jet concourse and the Bono concourse, and plans entirely new concourses in a different layout, but also expands and maintains the open space, shown in green on this drawing. The car rentals still to the north, and surface parking still to the south. And then, Alternative 3 is kind of the full replacement terminal facility. So, this looked at the available space within the terminal envelope to the south, along Kirk Douglas Way, basically. Kirk Douglas Way would become the front door of the facility in this concept, but the Wexler Terminal Building does not go away. In this particular scenario, the Wexler Terminal would be repurposed for some other use, and we're having some interesting discussions with the working group and with airport staff about what some of those possibilities might be. And that's one thing that we're going to be looking for input from the community on next week. So, those are our three concepts. Here they are again on one slide, just to kind of help you understand how these facilities could be laid out. The last thing I'll mention is, none of these terminals would ever get built at one time. This would be a phased approach, and that's really the next step in the process, is to determine how we would phase this and how we would construct it while keeping the airport open and minimizing the impact to passengers. It's some fairly significant facilities, but I think in the next step, as we phase them, it'll make sense how these concepts might be built over time. So, that's really our mission after this public meeting next week in this open house, is to start refining these concepts, start phasing them, and developing cost estimates, and continue to meet with the working group in October, and probably another briefing to you all in October with some potential for some recommendations. So, with that, Harry and I are happy to take questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions from council? Yeah, Mayor Protem.
So, I just want to clarify that there's only one community input meeting. So, will that be also a teleconference?
We did not set it up as a teleconference, but we do have a master plan website, and we're going to issue some press releases. We've got all the information on the website, and anyone who doesn't come to the meeting, there's going to be recorded videos on the website, so they can get the same presentation that they would get if they came to the meeting. And then, there's also a public comment forum.
They can give comment otherwise, if they can't make the meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay. And you said it's a 30-month process to get this master plan in place?
Correct. It was scoped for 30 months, broken into two phases. The first phase focused on landside and terminal development, and the second phase on the airfield, so runway, taxiway systems, apron, et cetera.
Okay. And just another thing, when you did the number of gates and the number of flights per hour, you were still looking at the 5:00 AM to nighttime hours for flights? Okay. And just for the public, the FIS, that's customs, basically, right?
Correct.
Okay. So, you're looking at a customs option for this. And I guess my only other question, sustainability is obviously important. I saw the number of cars and parking spaces, especially as we go more electric, that all of that's taken into account.
It is taken into account, and those will be policy decisions that we'll have to come back to the council and work with the community on. There are some impacts, or trade-offs, I should say, when it comes to sustainability, but we're certainly incorporating it in the planning process.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Middleton?
Thank you. Thank you for this presentation. Really good. Next week's public presentation or public meeting is a really good thing. Is it possible to look at having a second event? Because we're going to have a tremendous amount of interest in this, and I would like to encourage you also to hold multiple public meetings, to report back to the public on what you have heard at the first set of public meetings, and get across to the public that they are being listened to, and that we are trying to act upon what we're hearing from the public.
Absolutely. So, we can certainly look at additional open houses, or if not an open house, other methods, whether it be a webinar or something else. But the idea is to garner as much public feedback as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
All right, next is our last presentation, I promise. It is the Convention Center Future Study. Take it away.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members. I'm Rob Hampton. I'm the General Manager of the Convention Center and the Palm Springs Bureau of Tourism, and we are thrilled to be here tonight and to give you a brief overview of where we're at with the future study. The future study was launched about seven months ago to really assess the convention center, the impact of the convention center to the community, and how it fits in the overall hospitality, economic driving engine that we are. We've had several meetings with many of our stakeholders, and we have full support of leadership of the hospitality community. We engaged a company called CSL. It's convention, sports, and leisure. It's the leading consultants in our industry, and today I have John Katz I'd like to introduce. He is the Principal of CSL, and he's going to walk you through the study and where we're at today.
Thank you, Rob, Mayor, members of council. I think we've talked to most of you, if not all of you, at one point in time during the process, and as Rob said, this has been incredibly inclusive. The hospitality industry, the business community, even as recently as this morning, continuing the outreach to bring in information and insight from the community, which we think is critical. Matter of fact, I would say the hospitality industry and the business community in this market really, really understands the importance of bringing people in from out of town to support the economy, to support jobs, develop careers, et cetera. So, as Rob mentioned, it's probably seven months, and I want you really to understand that this was a deep dive. I boiled it down to about 15 slides, but it's really much deeper than that from the perspective of looking closely at the historical operations of the building. Where are we at today? What is our competition doing? What do we have to offer the convention attendee when they're coming to town? And what is the competition doing? Everybody that you compete with is doing this kind of study to find out, how can we get a bigger share of one of the most lucrative pies in the economy, the visitor industry, the convention industry, looking at trends, and then also talking to your customers. All of this gets boiled down into some key findings that'll lead to a couple of major recommendations that we want to talk to you about. Historical operations, we look at the convention center very closely. This is just one small snapshot of what we focus on. This is the room nights. You can see the green bar are the conventions and trade shows that we bring to Palm Springs because of the convention center, and they generate the lion's share of the room nights, which just pre-COVID, it had 82,000 room nights on an annual basis. We're talking about a lot of people coming in, a lot of economic impact, a lot of use of the airport, which is all synergistic to what we're trying to do. We also look at the occupancy of the exhibit space. We use this as a metric to understand, do we need more, or do we have it too much, or are we about right? And you're running a little under 50%, hit 50% in 2019 occupancy in your exhibit space. We'd rather see that 65%. That's starting to signal to us, we need a bigger addition of space. So, when we get to the recommendations, you won't see a doubling of the building. You'll see more of the improving what we have scenario, based in part on findings like this. I do also notice that in 2022, we're already back up to 40% occupancy, so we are recovering very quickly, just as the airport did, in terms of our convention business. Looking at what we have in terms of the destination, you can see the little gray box in the middle is our convention center. You can also see the balance of hotels, restaurants, retail, entertainment. This is a bit of a distance away from where we're at. You guys have all been to conventions. When you walk out of the building, when you walk out of your hotel, you don't want to walk down Andreas, you know, two or three blocks to get to all the restaurants. You want it in a walkable environment that's energetic and well-signed and safe and secure. So, when we talk about recommendations, this is steering us to the notion of connectivity. What you are as Palm Springs is amazing, and how do we tap into that from the convention standpoint? We also look at your space. On the left is the largest contiguous space that you have. It's your exhibit hall. And we're at about 92,000 square feet of space. We rank, you know, 10th, 11th, 9th, something like that. We're not the largest. We're a little bit smaller than average in terms of exhibit space. There will come a day when we're going to want to make this a larger building, a larger box. So, one of the things we talk about in terms of land planning is every parcel around your convention center is gold for the convention industry. We can build an office building or a residential tower anywhere. We can't expand our convention center anywhere. So, we want to keep that in the back of our mind, that real estate planning is a big part of this. And then, we look at total sellable space. I'm lumping in your meeting space and your ballroom when I get to total sellable, and we drop a little bit. This is a sign to us that while we may not need exhibit space today, we probably need an enhancement of ballroom and meeting space for the overall complex. We talk to your customers. Some of these customers have been here before, many have not. We want to get their business. We ask them, can we count on you to definitely, likely, or possibly come to Palm Springs for a convention? And these are damn near 100 surveys within the confines of our study process, and you can see we're at about an 82% overall positive response rate. That compares very favorably with some other studies we've conducted fairly recently, including Palm Beach County, kind of a sister destination coast to coast. So, we have a great deal of interest. I think a lot of that naturally is fed by the brand of Palm Springs. We're an internationally-known destination, and even a convention planner that's never been here, or requires more hotel rooms than we have, still knows about Palm Springs. So, we're really leveraging something that's fantastic within the brand. Then, we move to where we think the industry's going in terms of trends. Even pre-COVID, planners were looking more at outdoor event space. I start to think of a convention, and a convention center and the destination as more the village to produce an event. We have exhibit space, sure. We have meeting space. We call it a ballroom. But the planners these days, with the younger audience, the younger attendance group, don't think in terms of silos. They think in terms of, how do I produce something on this entire area within the building and even outside the building? They don't look at lobbies as a place to walk from point A to point B. They look at lobbies as a place, we can program this for informal meetings, fireside chats. It becomes, again, more of a gathering than a strictly produced event. So, if we look at some of these trends, we ask ourselves, where are we at with respect to the building today? And candidly, it's a nice building. It's very, very well-run. It's clean, but it's still dated, you know, 20 years ago. This is what we did 20 years ago. So, how do we go beyond that? From the perspective of outdoor, you can see on this slide, 1 and 2 represent Jackely Houston Plaza, the space outside, the convention center directly, right outside our front door there, Alvarado, you can see, and we're suggesting that we don't tear it out by any means, but we kind of reinvent to some degree that area so that we can host outdoor functions, pop-up tents fairly easily, close Alvarado when we need to. This becomes kind of a festival environment that is part of the fabric of a convention event. So, now, Rob and his sales team go to sell this destination against another destination. It's like, you come to Palm Springs, and sure, you've got your exhibits and your ballroom, but we have an entire outdoor living room for you that can be transformed to accommodate the latest and greatest trends in the industry. Number three, also really important, we're talking about this notion within the lobbies and the pre-function area of food and beverage and entertainment. And 10 years ago, 20 years ago, we solved that by bringing in Starbucks. Aren't we great? We got a Starbucks, let's move on. Now, destinations around the country are saying, we want a local coffee company in town. We want the local brewery to come in for the evening, a local distiller, a local food outlet. So, this becomes kind of coffee in the morning, perhaps a cocktail or a glass of wine in the evening, all locally sourced, all locally designed. You're now in a situation where I'm in your building. I know I'm in Palm Springs. I'm not at another, you know, one of the millions of Starbucks. So, those are some of the improvements we'd see in this area of the building on the west side. We flip over to the east side. We've got Oasis 4. I'm going to go to number seven there, Oasis Hall 4. You saw the occupancy of the space was fairly low. We also know that our ballroom is a little bit smaller than we'd like. So, we do think we could go into that and with some improvements to the ceiling structure, wall treatment, some lighting. We could create an opportunity to do ballroom-type events more effectively in Oasis 4. We also think that number six there, that reinventing the entrance on the east side is important. We all know that a lot of people park in that parking lot across the street, across Takweets, and that's their front door, and it's just not designed that way. So, Rob has brought in an architect, and they're still working through some plans that, I just saw some of them today, and you'll see those later. Amazing improvement to the green space and the entrance on the east side. So, that's another low-hanging fruit, not hugely expensive, that we think should be invested in pretty quickly. Moving on to the district, remember, we saw that where all the action is, is on Palm Canyon, Indian Canyon, and we're not quite there. So, how do we start to connect? And you've got a variety of options. You've got Amato, you've got Takweets, you've got Andreas in the middle there, and certainly with what's happening with the spa and the cultural center. You have opportunities to create an experience walking from the convention center into the downtown area. We're talking about monumental public art. That's important, because I can walk out of a hotel and say, go to that giant, you know, whatever it is, that's Palm Street, this representative of our destination, and you can move the pedestrian, the person that doesn't live here, quickly to the key junctures. We're talking about themed wave finding. We're talking about nighttime activations, even the micro-transit shuttles. There's markets, small and size, are experimenting with these automated shuttles that go back and forth, driverless shuttles. It's here. I mean, it really is. So, the experience for the attendee moving towards downtown and back becomes part of the overall festival experience of the destination. It's well-lit. It's programmed. We're doing events. We're doing activities. There's shade structures. There's music at certain times. So, we've built a district now that includes everything you see in orange. That's what we're selling to the convention planner and the convention attendee. We look at more of the longer-term planning. We do need a headquarter hotel. We have probably 1,200 rooms within a half a mile of the convention center. The problem is, as few as 400, 450 of those are committable for a convention, and it makes sense. I can get, I mean, during COVID, I was getting $400, $500 a night from leisure travelers. So, why would I give my rooms to a convention that's only $300 a night? So, their commitability was fairly low, and it still is low, and that's not a bad thing. That means we're generating a lot of money in our hotel industry. But to really move to the next level, we're going to need that headquarter hotel. I'd love it to be 300 rooms committable, which is probably 400 rooms built, at least. And there are a variety of locations that we've talked about in terms of the ideal headquarter hotel location. I think that's the Nexus site that the city's been in conversation with. They've got some plans for various hotels, residential, selfishly and from the perspective of protecting, enhancing the convention industry in Palm Springs. I'd love to see a much larger hotel. We've got the Dream Hotel that's discussed. I don't know if that's going to happen or not. That's only maybe 160 rooms if they do it. Doesn't move the needle. Couple other smaller properties, again, they're great additions, but they don't really allow us to move further into the convention industry. The parking lot that you have on the backside of the convention center, very critical. That might be where we do our big expansion someday. So, let's make sure we don't sell that. Let's keep that particular lot. So, some of the land planning thinking that we think will be really, really critical, and candidly, you know, as I look at this, it's that Nexus site that really is the most important piece of real estate to the future of the convention industry in Palm Springs. So, where do we go from here? You can see 10 steps that vary from small to large. Rob's already got the architects looking at the improvements interior to the building, and Jackely Houston Plaza to some degree. We'd love to see that happen within one to two years. Reinvention of the western space in the entry lobby, same thing, one to two years. The various hotels we talked about, the Dream Hotel, they're coming. If they do happen, they'll come within the next one to three years. That's fine. The convention district coni- The convention district connectivity issues, this is the big idea. This is something we need to start planning now. So in the next one to five years, we're starting to unveil the new convention destination for Palm Springs. Enhance Oasis 4, that can happen in the next three to five years. And then the headquarters hotel, maybe a three- to five-year project because they are not easy projects to do. I will tell you, if we're going to do a headquarters hotel of any size, and we're saying three to five years, the starting gun goes off here real quick. Because to get it sighted, planned, financed, designed, built, takes a long time. So we are ready to move fairly quickly into some of those developments. Downtown Business Improvement District, you've had those in the past. I kind of like those ideas, they're hospitality industry-led. Expansion on the Caballero slot, this will be the big idea, the big expansion somewhere down the road. Maybe it's a 10-year plan. So those are some of the big ideas that we think in terms of timing to move us forward in the convention industry. And then we talk about some of the impacts. You saw earlier, we were pushing 80,000 room nights in 2019. If we do nothing, we kind of leave the building, it's getting clean, it's well-run, it looks like it did 15 years ago. If that's kind of what we do, our market share will erode. Other competitive destinations are building that trend-forward development. They're building hotels, they're building hospitality. So our do-nothing projection is that goes down to about 72,000 room nights and continues to drop over time from there. If we do all the interior improvements, Jackie Lee Houston, we begin the process of connectivity, we're looking to move that to 100,000. And once we build a headquarters hotel and we fully connect and we create a convention destination that has all the assets, we're at 120,000 room nights sustainable on an average annual basis. We look at the variety of other impacts, I won't go into the numbers, but every dollar I spend as a visitor gets respent. The person that's working at the restaurant has to go buy clothes for their children when they go to school at kindergarten, when they're six years old, and their birthday is today. It gets respent throughout the economy. Employment, I talk about jobs, but I really talk about careers. Hospitality industry is a starting point for many people to get into the professional world and their high-paying jobs. As you move up the ladder, you can build an entire career around hospitality, and we're supporting that. And as we all know, the hospitality industry in Palm Springs is a heck of a lot more important than it is in Covington, Kentucky. We really do need to protect that golden goose. Tax revenues generated to the public sector, every dollar in tax revenues you generate from a visitor is a dollar you don't have to pay as a resident. And lastly, and just as importantly, the profit that goes to the hospitality industry. These are businesses, hotels, restaurants, that feed the tax engine. Their hotel tax pay for a lot of what we've developed, and the cycle continues because they're bringing in business that creates a profit model for them. So this really is the classic public-private benefit type project when you're investing in the convention and trade show industry. Last couple of slides, this is the financial operations of the building. You can see we've got probably a dozen or so convention centers around the country. And you can see their operating deficit on average is about 600,000, median of 777,000. Communities accept and finance deficits in the convention center because of the kind of room nights, economic impact, tax revenue, and industry profit that it generates. It's a loss leader for the community. If I've got a 1,000-person convention and I'm generating a ton of economic impact, I've got five cities that I'm considering, there's a bidding war to get that piece of business because of the impact that it's generated. So we've run at 1.3 million in 17 to 19 average, in part because of the revenue-generating assets we don't have. We don't have that kiosk in the lobby, we don't have techno, we don't have monitors within the building and exterior to the building we can use for advertising and sponsorships. Good news is, in 2023, they were able to erase the deficit, in part from Apex, a large event that came to town and generated a ton of food and beverage. I suggest that the way they're running the building now, we're going to be able to sustain at that average, median number. We're not going to run a profit, don't count on that. But I think if we're at that average median number, we're pretty safe to project that, improving from where we've been. And then as we introduce these improvements, we'll be able to cement that in as a good baseline as opposed to the 1.2, 1.3 million, which is, you know, really a savings of $400,000 or $500,000 a year in operations because we have a better product to sell that we can monetize more effectively. Lastly, next steps, you've kind of seen some of this, the one-on-one interviews with city manager, elected officials, you guys were all involved with that. HMC is the architect, they're working now to develop some plans and renderings. Initial conversations with hospitality industry leaders, that's been underway. And as I say, rare to see that much 100% support for a project like this from all stakeholders within the hospitality industry so far. Formal presentation to council, September, we're doing that today. And then the next steps, we're looking at financing options and beginning the process of not final design, but how do we lay the building out, bringing in an urban planner to help us understand what this thing could look like. And as I say, how do we pay for it? Those are the next immediate steps. So I'll wrap up with that, and certainly if there's any questions, comments, thoughts, I'd be happy to entertain those.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Do we have any comments or questions? Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you. I think this is an outstanding presentation, it's a good start. My comment is, it's a very necessary step for us to take. Tourism is the foundation of the Palm Springs economy. And we talk constantly that we're going to invent this new industry or that new industry. Tourism is the industry that we have, and almost everything that we have in the city results from the success of our tourism industry. So I can think of very few things that are more important than for us to address these issues. Is there anything you need from city council at this point?
I don't think, Rob, we've got any kind of ask at this point. I do want you to know that, again, the next steps are, how do we pay for this? And we will have to find the revenue to bring in a conceptual architect and urban planner. So those are the next two big steps going forward. And if I may, Mayor, Council, you reminded me of a conversation I just had recently with the convention bureau director in Denver. They did a survey of all new businesses moving into the destination. 85% of the CEOs that moved to Denver had been to a convention before. So when we talk about all these other industries, we are that leading edge of the wedge, bringing them to town to say, wow, I never knew. This is an opportunity for business expansion.
Mayor Proton.
So apart from the hotel, do you have any idea the range of how much money this would cost to fix our convention center?
I don't. From the convention center standpoint, I'd say the good news is this, we are not adding a ton of space. This isn't Los Angeles where they're talking about a billion-dollar project. We're fixing what we have, some minor additions. So I think in the grand scheme of things, this won't be a massively expensive project. I don't know what the numbers are, but that is part of the next step with the architects.
Okay. And I agree with Councilmember Middleton. I mean, TOT was 50 million last year, a quarter of our general fund, which doesn't even include all the tax and everything else, the sales tax and everything else that was generated. So I love the local aspect to it. I mean, I think that's something that we probably have much more to offer than a lot of cities just in terms of the variety of our local, especially our food and beverage options out there. I also am very intrigued by the shade aspect of, you talked about walking from the convention center to downtown, which I believe is actually something that we need throughout our downtown. Because once you walk downtown, it's in the summer, or heat, it's hot. So that was my third question, my next question was, is the idea on how to activate this more during the off-season months? Is that part of the general plan?
Off-season and weekday. Talking to a lot of the hoteliers, certainly the off-season is really rough. But we have to admit that, you know, bringing conventions in 115-degree heat is always going to be a challenge. But even during the more high-demand seasons, our weekends are great, but getting a, if I got a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday piece of business that can pay $380 a night for a medical convention or conference, love to have it, that'll be very helpful.
Okay, this was terrific, thank you.
You bet.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Oh, Councilmember Hart.
I love the district connectivity idea that's here. And I would hate for us to lose sight of the idea here, and that I really would support that. On the market outreach slide, convention center facility trends, what's the measurement there for? 3.62, 3.56?
One to five scale. Yeah, yeah. On a scale of one to five, how important are these things?
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Holstich.
Thank you. We had a great meeting and really appreciate your work on this, as well as our convention center and tourism leaders who are here tonight. Really excited also about the connectivity, and you just mentioned it really briefly, but transportation and the creative ways that we can transport people around downtown. The city's tried to solve this issue with the Buzz Bus. You know, we've looked into Circuit, which Palm Desert uses, or other carts or transportation options. You know, and so I think that is absolutely one problem to solve here in the connectivity conversation. So I love the proposals of using public art and lighted pathways, but I know we talked about shade, and I would love to think really boldly and broadly about transportation. Because as we see it get hotter and hotter, it's harder to walk those few blocks to, you know, more of the businesses and restaurants. So really appreciate that thinking. I know we're updating our general plan right now. So is our general plan going to consider and include some of these updates, both for the airport and the convention center, as we think through the plan, especially around the land use, around the convention center?
The convention center itself is actually within the Section 14 specific plan. We don't have any intention to update it at this point, but based on the recommendations of the study, that's something that we might pursue with the tribe. In terms of the airport, I think the updates to our land use element of the general plan will accommodate the expansion of the airport. And then just moving on to another topic that you brought up in terms of shade, pedestrian access, things like that, we anticipate that those elements will be covered in the update of the zoning code, which our planning department is getting ready to kick off here shortly.
Great, I think that's really important to make all of this real. And the central business district, is that being amended through the general plan or the zoning code update? So the Section 14 specific plan isn't, but it may be relevant for the rest of the central business district for transportation and other elements of the downtown.
Yes, through the zoning code update, we would make amendments to our central business district, which is the primary area adjacent to access to the convention center.
Thank you. You've been getting us very excited about this zoning code update for many years, Flynn, so we are anxiously awaiting that. Thank you for your work.
All right, thank you all very much, I really appreciate your work on this and your presentation. Thank you. All right, with that, we will move on to the acceptance of our agenda. The city council will discuss the order of the agenda, may amend the order at urgency items, note abstentions or no votes on consent calendar items, or request consent calendar items be removed for a separate discussion. We'd like to entertain a motion. For acceptance of the agenda, are there any items staff or council member would like removed from the consent calendar for a separate discussion or vote? Mayor Proton.
Yeah, I would, I'm going to first, I'm going to recuse myself from 1P Papa, just I have a business within 500 feet of that. So, and I would like to pull 1U.
Thank you very much. Anything else? Okay. Do we have a motion? So moved, I can't do it online, can you?
Oh, it looks like we, yeah, we were able to do it. We have motion, so we can all do, we can all vote. I have a motion in a second.
Great. At this time, can we have a report of closed session from our city attorney, Ryan?
Yes, thank you.
How do you pronounce your last name, Ryan?
It's Gueboa.
Gueboa, okay.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, city council, members of the public. The city council met in closed session pursuant to the items listed on the closed session agenda, and there is no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is public testimony. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the city council on non-public hearing agenda items only. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. You're asked to begin your time by telling us what agenda item or items you are speaking on. Please note that testimony for public hearings will be taken at the time of the public hearing, and general public comment for subjects not on the agenda will be taken later in the evening. If there's any written comment that you'd like to have distributed, please hand that to the city clerk, and the city clerk will distribute to the council. Our first speaker is Kelly Mu Chesterson with Find Food Bank. Kelly here? Perhaps Kelly did not make it after all. All right, we will move on to Greg Roberts.
Mayor, council members, my name is Greg Roberts. I am the newly-appointed chairperson of the Village Fest board. So I'd like to speak to you tonight about item 3B, the sidewalk vendors. For 30 years, Village Fest has collaborated with the city to provide a venue to showcase artisans, entrepreneurs, while promoting the downtown corridor, its merchants, and offering a Palm Springs experience to residents and visitors alike. Village Fest is one of the premier city events, attracting thousands of people weekly to a great time in a safe, healthy, and regulatory-compliant environment. Today, there are over 200 vendors at Village Fest, which include 28 diverse food truck vendors and approximately 25 food service vendors. We're most proud of the former Village Fest vendors that have transitioned to successful brick-and-mortar businesses. Know for certain that we are not shy from competition, we support it and encourage it. The city has a regulatory, safe, compliant venue for micro-businesses, and it is Village Fest. On Thursdays, especially in season, the downtown area is very crowded, and safety, especially due to street closures, is a concern for all. Health and safety are non-negotiable. This amendment, for safety reasons, makes exceptions to sidewalk vending from Thursday through Sunday within certain hours and primarily during high tourist season. So to promote safety and minimize potential distractions due to a large crowd generator like Village Fest, our ask of the council is to consider this limitation being changed to Thursday to Sunday. Our goal is to keep Village Fest and its visitors safe on Thursdays during this event. Lastly, we would welcome all sidewalk vendors to consider becoming Village Fest vendors, giving them an opportunity to present their products to a huge potential customer base while within a safe, health-focused environment. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, can I ask a clarifying question if I can? I don't usually do that, but you're saying "we," are you speaking in your personal capacity? Or did you get authority from the commission itself to give the public comment?
I am speaking in my personal capacity.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alejandro Mesa Aguilar, followed by Brian Sanchez.
Hi, just want to thank the council of the city of Palm Springs for working with us for about a year on this issue. And also, I want to say Deputy City Manager Flynn as well for working with us. But my question is to Police Chief Mills, please demonstrate the evidence where street vendors have shown to be a nuisance or direct public danger through the volume of 16,000 calls that were cited in the June 5 meeting. None of those calls cited were directed towards the street vending, and the evidence has potential to mislead the public and misinform. The council, misinform the council to vote and avoid formalizing street vending equitably? You're setting yourself up to criminalize an industry that is largely PLC, immigrant, and women-led. This demonstrates a lack of protection for the public you and the city council are meant to serve. If you formalize street vending well, by removing the prohibition, or at least reducing it to from Friday, you know, the times that were listed, Friday to Sunday, October 1st to April 30th, from 4:00 to 11:00 instead to 4:00 to 8:00, which would be more reasonable, it focuses on the dinner surge, you could set a workers' rights center for us to focus on the labor concerns that were previously discussed. And it's, and that's how you can focus on those concerns. It's time to write good policy for street vendors because we've been working on this for about a year.
Thank you. Next speaker is Brian Sanchez, followed by Liseth Mendoza.
Hello, good evening, council members. I'm speaking on item 3B. Thank you for bringing back this ordinance for its second reading. The passage of an equitable sidewalk vending ordinance is the vital first step for integrating Palm Springs vendors Palm Springs vendors into the local economy and into the culture of this city. The Inland Coalition for Immigrant Justice is here today to advocate for the street vendors of the area by asking this council to revise the current ordinance, in particular, the seasonal prohibition that is currently in place in the downtown areas of the Arenas District and Palm Canyon. While we commend this council and its staff for working tirelessly to change and improve this ordinance, we still believe that this ordinance is still being guided by a frame of mind that views sidewalk vendors as outsiders and not a part of Palm Springs. In past City Council meetings, when this ordinance was first brought up, there were those on the council who described the increase of sidewalk vendors as an explosion of vendors, and framed them not as locals, but as outside actors being exploited for their labor. We urge this council to move away from this frame of mind and to recognize that this sort of rhetoric has a potential to further ostracize sidewalk vendors, the majority of which are immigrants who already feel like outsiders within their own communities. If this council is concerned for the well-being of the sidewalk vendors who work and reside in Palm Springs, we urge them not to include the seasonal prohibition in the ordinance, which will further push vendors out of the city, further alienating them, and making them more vulnerable to any sort of exploitation or mistreatment, and making it more difficult to connect and educate them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Liseth Mendoza, followed by Brad Anderson.
Good evening. I'm the Economic Justice Organizing Director for Inland Coalition for Immigrant Justice, which is made up of 45 organizations that collectively advocate for the rights of immigrants. Some of those folks submitted letters this week and have been supporting us for months now with this ordinance. Together, we reach over 100,000 Inland Empire residents yearly, including thousands in the cities throughout Riverside County. I am here for a third time, as mentioned before, to address some of these concerns with some of these provisions in the ordinance, and continue to provide recommendations that will have a big impact on sidewalk vendors, a very small number of sidewalk vendors that are currently operating in the city. We recognize that you are concerned about health and safety, but let me remind you that those concerns have to be objective. The exclusions created in the Arenas downtown area are not adequately justified and signal economic protection and hostility against vendors that is prohibited under state law. There are, these areas are the most commercially desirable locations for sidewalk vendors, and should be areas where the city would work to create infrastructure and find reasonable ways for vendors to exist. A local ordinance that tries to limit street vending in downtown affects the street vendors, and it affects their families and the families that rely on those businesses, such as retail markets, manufacturing, and transportation. Implementing ordinances that restrict vending not only goes against the individualistic ideals that our country was founded on, it also segregates street vendors, creates a negative discourse, and has contributed to violent attacks by vigilantes against them, and has a negative impact on the economies where they work. The city can instead work to apply for grants, as ICAJ, we invested $800,000 to incorporate 88 small food businesses into the formal economy in both Riverside and San Bernardino Counties. With those dollars, 30 sidewalk vendors are now working to invest in small carts, trucks, and other startup costs, and because the startup costs are a lot, we hope that you don't require the liability insurance every year. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Brad Anderson, followed by Ellis De La Huse.
Hi, my name's Brad Anderson. I live in the city of Las Vegas. I'm gonna speak on Item 1A today, and that's concerning your remote meetings for your board members and commissioners and committee heads. I'm opposed to this, just because it's an expired law, and you, and the city doesn't meet any of the criteria outlined in your staff report to implement that again. From the 30-day, you run over your 30-day period, besides that law has expired, and I think, that's all I, I'm very glad to say. I mean, you have the remote meetings, but they're not being conducted correctly either, so, and you're the last city I know that's using this law that you shouldn't be using. So I would urge you to stop and join the rest of the county with following the Brown Act requirements. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ellis De La Huse, followed by John Luna.
Madam Mayor, council members, my name's Ellis De La Huse. I'm speaking on 1P. I work for RIN Acquisitions, RAI, for the proposed Wine Lounge opening for the Type 20 license. We're going to be opening a new location here in Palm Springs. We're based out of Napa currently, and looking to expand and to help develop the downtown central business district of Palm Springs. So I don't have much more to say about it, but open up for any questions.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. John Luna, followed by Nancy Ferguson.
Hello, good evening, members of the City Council and mayor. My name is John Luna. I am a regional policy advocate with the Coalition for Humane Immigrant Rights. It's also known as TRLA. We're the largest nonprofit immigrant rights organization in California, and we're here with ICAJ in solidarity with street vendors. We are here to urge you to adopt the following changes. First, to remove the seasonal prohibition of street vending in the downtown areas of the Arenas District and Palm Canyon for the months of October, October through April from Friday through Sunday from 4:00 to 11:00 p.m. Not only this would benefit the economy, as we, as the presentations mentioned early, but this would beautify the city, enrich the culture, among different things, and this would all increase the economic output. Then we also urge you to change the 48-inch clear pathway to 36 inches, which would still be in compliance with the, with ADA regulations. And third, to grant free business licenses for elders ages 55 and older. Ultimately, sidewalk vendors, they're just trying to produce economic output, they're trying to live day-to-day, and by having these prohibitions, we are denying them the opportunity from doing that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nancy Ferguson, followed by Alex Cruz.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm here to speak on 1U, which is the library. So I've been a resident of Palm Springs and a library patron since 1996. I've been checking out books and movies and attending lectures and participating in a summer reading program. But as we all know, the library building is outdated, and its usefulness, and it needs to be modernized in order to continue to provide the patrons with services, but also to provide those services that weren't envisioned when the library was first built. And I understand that Item 1U is to authorize the architecture firm to start, to start the process to get us a new library. So I'm encouraged by this progress that's being made by the city, and to make this happen, and I look forward to participating in the study sessions and the public forums that are going to happen as this project moves forward. And I also would like to add that I recently joined the Library Foundation Board, because I'm permitted, I'm, I'm not permitted. I really believe that we need a new library, and this is gonna happen. I know it's gonna happen. It's time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our last comment is from Alex Cruz.
Good evening, mayor and City Council. My name is Alex Cruz, and for Item L, well, I wish I knew what the vehicles were for, so I can actually speak properly on this item, but I'm actually speaking about Item T for the bridge on Vistachino. I just want to ask that you please consider making sure there's a sidewalk and a bike lane on each side going in each direction, please, because that will make the bridge pedestrian and bicyclist friendly. It may seem like a small issue, but it's a danger, because having a bike lane that goes both directions on one side of the bridge, it's gonna make them cross in dangerous areas, and that's already happening in other areas. So please consider this before the bridge is constructed. And also for Item B, I am also in support of the street vendors. I don't believe there's much of a competition at all. I mean, the hot dogs are, personally, I wouldn't even eat them, but the street, the street fair food is much different, and so is the restaurant food. And, yeah, and I don't think they bother anyone. The space that they take up is not a concern. When it comes to space being taken up, I think we should talk about how much space the cars take. Thank you.
Thank you, and it's good to see folks here that I usually get emails from, and now I'm seeing them in person, so it's nice. We are now moving on to our consent calendar. I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar without items, without Item 1U, and noting the recusal of the Mayor Protem on Item 1P. And I do want to just make a note for Item 1D for the public. Our representative for Cal Cities is Councilmember Lisa Middleton, not myself, and I believe that's what we're voting on right now. And then council was already briefed. With that, do we have a motion in a second? I see a motion. If we can get someone to do a second.
Madam Mayor, can I add, really crack if I can, just for the public comment, for the vehicles for Item 1L, you can go on the city website, palm springs ca.gov, or you could talk to the city clerk and get a copy of the packet for what we're approving, but it's for engineering, public works, and it has listed out the vehicles and then the departments there, so you can always find that information, and we can help you if you need it. Thank you.
We will now move to Item 1U, approved professional service agreement for Palm Springs Public Library renovation projects, main library renovations, and J.C. Frye Building Rehabilitation Phase 1, if we can get a staff report.
Hi, good evening. I'm Jeannie Kays, Library Director, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council. You are reviewing the Item 1U, approved professional service agreement with Group 4 Architecture, Research, and Planning for the Palm Springs Public Library renovation projects, 1608 Main Library renovations, and 19-18, the J.C. Frye Building Rehabilitation. So the library, working in partnership with engineering and the procurement and contracting department, created a request for qualifications for an architect, and we received 14 qualified applicants. And the committee, there was a committee of five members, made up of two librarians, an engineer, a planner, and a member of the community, and we reviewed the packets, narrowed it down to five architects, interviewed the architects, did a, did a scoring analysis of all of these architects, and Group 4 architects became the leader in this packet. But what I wanted to explain to you is kind of what will happen and what this is, because I think that might be a kind of a question. So we have a couple of little slides. This proposal before you, the design is for this part, I don't necessarily want to use the word phase, because I don't want, it's kind of confusing when you say the word phase, because you think, oh, well, we're going to build things. But this one is design. So this is, this is for design part one, and so we know that we have grant-funded items that need to happen, and so we are definitely designing, the architect will create a design for all of that work. The part that is up in the air and what will happen later is, right now, they're going to create cost estimates for all of the renovation aspects that the communities asked for, that we've asked for, both the things that are needed, that we want, and the things that, the things that we want and the things that are needed, because when you do all of the infrastructure, there are things that have to be done to put the building back in play, like put carpet back, so, but that's not included in the grant funds. So they're gonna come up with the cost estimates for all of that. And then the J.C. Frye Building, that is part of this project too, and that building definitely needs some design from the architect. So we know that Measure J has funded, put aside money for the J.C. Frye Building, it's put aside matching funds for our infrastructure grant, and then also some additional funds for down-the-line work. So right now, this is part one of what we are asking for today, and later, we will, once we have those cost estimates, we will come back with that information, and the city will select the elements that will be done. A full design package will happen. We will negotiate additional architecture fees for that at a future date to be determined. And then down the line, once we get all that done and all that design package done, we will do construction. And so construction could be done all at once, one full giant package, depending on what we select, or it could be phased, depending on the costs and the community needs and assessments and what the architects recommend. So I just wanted to lay this out, and I am a visual person, so I like to see it done with pictures, and so right now, we're at step one. So we're at design part one. We will bring back the costs and then select design elements, and then come back again to do step three. And again, with step four, the construction could be done as option one or option two. And really, that is my presentation. I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you very much. Do you have questions? Mayor Protem.
Well, I pulled it, and these were my questions, so to understand how we, how we were awarding the design contract without fully understanding the scope of the project, because I know in our RFQ that we, you presented in February, there was everything from a cafe to a theater, and obviously that would affect the design. So you've answered all the questions, because I think this is, and the other question I had really was on the use of the J.C. Frye Building, which is sort of unusable as it is, I think, right now, and I know you talked about that the architects would help develop a use for that as part of the whole design phase. And the, I support this, and the third thing I did want to just always mention is that Measure J is paid for a large portion of it, and it's set aside a lot of money for the library and potentially more, and Measure J is, this is a great tax that, if there is a great tax. It is funded mostly by tourists, and obviously something like the library really benefits our residents, so I don't want to under, I don't want to omit the importance of Measure J in this discussion, and I thank you for answering all my questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, seeing if we can get a motion in a second. Okay, motion passes 5-0. Thank you. The next item is Item 2A, a public hearing for a request by the city of Palm Springs for approval of the annual update of the Palm Springs zoning and municipal codes. Now we have a staff report, please.
Yes, good evening, mayor and council. This is our, our update to our municipal and zoning code that we bring forward to the council every year. It's really a technical update to our zoning and municipal codes that we identify throughout the prior year to clean up our ordinance and really make it more clear, or correct, make corrections that are necessary for appropriate changes to our codes. So with that, I'll get started. The first thing that I just want to draw attention to is our tennis courts. Currently, our ordinance is limit or identify specific requirements for private tennis courts in our residential districts. That's in Section 930101 of our zoning code. We don't regulate other types of sport courts, so what we're doing, what we'd like to do today with your approval is modify that section to encompass other sport courts like pickleball, basketball, and volleyball. So there's some minor changes to that section to accommodate those additional sport courts. We're making some minor adjustments, proposing some minor adjustments to our planned development district ordinance to accommodate minor to accommodate minor increases in lot coverage and allow the director to make approvals, minor approvals for increases in the number of units. So long as that proposal complies with our general plan, it only results in a negligible increase in square footage. The second one here we have is, as I said, minor modifications to lot coverage and open space for medium and high-density multifamily housing projects. And that's really to make some minor adjustments, if those are needed, for residential projects. And that kind of relates to some of the housing updates that we're proposing as well. The SB 9 urban lot splits and two-unit development ordinances that we have in our zoning and municipal codes, we're proposing to allow nonprofit developers to utilize this tool. Currently, there's a restriction in those ordinance to limit those to the property owners. So we want to extend that to nonprofit developers so that they have that ability to provide additional housing in our city, as well as exempt them from the occupancy requirement that is currently in our codes. There's another one here, to modify our density bonus ordinance to allow rental housing that is proposed for moderate-income units to receive density bonuses and other incentives that are afforded in our density bonus ordinance. So that's really a minor correction that, as a result of a project that we saw come forward as a preliminary application earlier this year. And then there are some proposed cleanup items to our architectural review and development permit ordinances. As you recall, we updated that ordinance comprehensively back in 2020. So these are really some cleanup items. We'd like to make sure that we're capturing some hillside additions and remodels and making sure those are still subject to review. Clarifying some submittal requirements for the pre-submittal conference applications, really ensuring that applicants know what is required and that at the pre-submittal stage, it is a conceptual set of plans. We're also ensuring that, we also want to address a gap where we see in our code relative to the effective date of an approval. So as you may recall, first, the development permit gets approved by our planning commission, followed by that is the architectural review application that goes to our architectural review committee. We want to make sure that after the ARC approval is really the effective date of that application, but we also want to make sure there's no gap between our planning commission and ARC. And then lastly, change the appeal filing requirement from our clerk to the planning department so that, given the change to our online permitting applications, those are all really being handled through our new intergov system. So it would be appropriate that those appeals are filed in that system and those come through the planning department. Some cleanup items with some changes that have happened to the organization relative to the references to the planning department and planning directors. So those are shown in the proposed updates. We are looking at proposing revising our time limit to be consistent with state law as it relates to our conditional use permits. There's a development agreement for the Virgin Hotel that is still in our zoning code that we believe should be rescinded, given that that development agreement is no longer active and has actually expired. And then lastly, there was a couple of requests from our engineering department on some streamlining of sewer exemption processes, reclassifying those from council to city manager, and in one case, city manager to the city engineer, as well as a change to improve how mailboxes are permitted within the right-of-way, as well as ensuring that those mailboxes are complying with ADA clearance requirements. So this cleanup for our codes was presented to the planning commission on June 28th. They unanimously recommended approval of these changes. There's a couple of others that were proposed but have since been removed, given the commission's concern that those were more policy-related changes. So what you have in your package is all of the recommendations that were carried forward from our planning commission. And again, this is really more of a technical cleanup to our code. It's planned that we will do a comprehensive update to our zoning code once we are completed with our general plan update, which we hope to have before you at the end of this year. And at that time, we would commence the actual update of our zoning code. The RFP for that is actually getting ready to go out very soon. So I'm happy to answer any questions of council. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Councilmember DeHart.
So after the general plan is done, how long will the zoning, the update plan take?
Yeah, good. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Councilmember DeHart, we're hoping to have someone onboarded either by the end of the year or early next year, depending on the RFP process. There are a number of other large projects in queue with our procurement team, so we'll work through that. But in any event, I would hope that we would come back to, potentially by the end of next year. We're looking at maybe a 12-month process. You know, it'll depend on how robust the engagement is. We obviously need to get out into the community, hear their priorities, go through a process there. In tandem, we'll be doing updates to our urban design guidelines. So there's quite a bit of work that's going to be folded into it, but ideally a year.
A year from the approval of the...
From the onboarding of the consultant.
Yeah, okay.
The end of next year, potentially.
Any other questions for staff? Mayor Pro Tem?
Just for clarification, because I've had somebody ask about our zoning for tattoo parlors, which apparently is only allowed in professional zones and not even industrial or where we allow adult businesses. That's part of the zoning code that would happen next year?
We could reconsider that. So as I understand it, there's a bit of a history there. We did look at expanding the applicability of where tattoo parlors and other similar uses could be permitted in the downtown area. I think under a previous council, we decided not to take that up. But if there's interest among this council, we would certainly evaluate that as part of the comprehensive update and look for direction from you all at some point next year.
That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'd like to open the public hearing. The public is invited to speak for two minutes on this item. Do we have any public comments?
No public comment, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. With that, we will close the public hearing. Is there any discussion from council or additional questions? Seeing none, if we can get a motion and a second and a vote. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. The next item is item 2B, a public hearing for a request by the City of Palm Springs for a proposed amendment to historic District Number One, the Las Palmas Business Historic District. Now we have a staff report, please.
Yes, good evening, everyone. My name is Ken Lyon, and I'm a principal city planner and the city's former historic preservation officer. So this is a recommendation by the city's historic site preservation board for amendment approval of the city's first historic district, which is the Las Palmas Business Historic District. I have one quick question. How do I advance slides here? Is it through these buttons? Oh, beautiful. Thank you. So a little bit first to start with, what's a historic district? Now, it seems obvious, but the difference between a historic district and a historic site is a district is a combination or a collection of sites and buildings that have a shared or common theme or is significant importance about them. So in this particular case, the Las Palmas Business Historic District, like its name says, is significant because it reflects the city's expansive growth from being a village to a full-fledged city, and how that growth is reflected in the buildings in this particular part of the city. So this is what the Las Palmas Business Historic District was as it was introduced in 1986. The significance, as I mentioned, the expansion of that original village core. The original focus during that time was buildings from the 20s and 30s. It's interesting, as you look at preservation, it keeps marching along. So even now, we're starting to look at buildings from the 70s. Many of the important commercial buildings in the district that we now recognize as being significant to Palm Springs were not even considered at that time. And also, there are currently many non-contributing buildings or parcels in the district that weaken its overall strength and significance. Most of the buildings, as you can see from these slides, in the district have retained their historic character. So you see there the Dollar Building, the Reed Clinic, El Paseo and Pacific, and the Colony Palms Hotel. Others have been so modified that they no longer qualify as historic. A couple of these I'm pointing out, the one to the left there is the Palm Springs Florist. The one in the middle is the original Ambassador Hotel, now known as the Triata. It went from a very modest structure to a sandcastle of architecture. And then the last one is what is called the Reed Clinic II. And as you see there, between its original condition and now, it has been pretty much eviscerated to a gray box with a little turret. There are some important buildings from the post-World War period that are now being recognized. The Turiné Building, which we know with Trio Restaurant, the Dollar Building, mentioned before, Clark &amp; Frey's Office, the Backstrom Reed Building, and the Nichols Building, which we now know as Trina Turk. Very important buildings to our overall Palm Springs brand that all represent from the post-World War II period that were not recognized at the time this building was, the district was established in the 80s. So why do we want to amend this now? It provides many things that the district, we would put together today, are simply missing from this district's organization. So a required context statement or theme, what makes this district historic? It tells the whole story, adding the important buildings from the post-war period that I just mentioned. Provides a defined period of significance. Why some buildings are important here and why some are not is because there's a distinct period of time that we're reflecting with this district. It provides an analysis of the individual buildings to substantiate their contributing status. It's not an arbitrary reason of why these buildings were brought in or left as non-contributing. It sticks to the business and commercial theme, meaning we're removing some of the residential buildings that were originally put in this district in the 1980s that simply don't relate to the business theme of the district. It achieves the requirement that a majority of buildings, at least 51%, are contributing. This is part of the national standards, as well as the standards that we put in place in our ordinance revisions in 2019 and 2020. It clarifies what is really historic. In other words, distinguishing that from what I call pseudohistoric, which is really what we have with the Triata Hotel. It's beautiful, but it no longer reflects its historic condition. It recognizes some contributing buildings that don't contribute anymore because of them being heavily altered, as I just mentioned. And then it includes some, it includes non-contributing buildings only as necessary to establish reasonable district boundaries. So this map, albeit small, explains the difference. The map on the left is the current district as it has been approved in the 1980s. The map on the right, in terms of that area in yellow, is what the proposed historic district would be. It's a similar, it's a smaller historic district with more contributing sites, fully reflecting the period of significance. And I want to make a little footnote here on this. By taking some of these buildings out and making this district smaller, if you go back to some of the discussions we were just listening to, the buildings that are outside of the district have a much more streamlined process for redevelopment. And that's kind of important when you start to look at these areas like the entire area north of downtown. This area is going to continue to expand and grow, and it makes, accommodates that kind of future expansion. So the HSPB recommendation to the city council is as, and I'm going to go through this very quickly because you can ask me any questions about it later, creating a district theme, establishing the period of significance from 1920 to 1969. There was an error in the staff report, by the way, where it was mentioned as 1960. So it is 1969. That's going to be the end date. It includes the contributing sites that reflect the full business growth story. It includes an archival record showing the criteria, why certain buildings are considered contributing. It amends the boundaries to meet the new ordinance requirements and the national standards. And we've recommended updating the district's design guidelines to meet the contemporary preservation standards. And staff recommends the HSPB recommendations. So that's a quick summary. I'm here to answer the other questions that you may have. And again, we're recommending approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ken. Do we have any questions from council? Mayor Pro Tem?
So I just thank you for this. It's very interesting. And I did ask you some questions before. I did want to clarify. All the contributing buildings now, if they're commercial, they'll have the issue where any exterior alterations will have to be approved, signage or awnings or lighting?
Yes, any contributing building would go through a typical certificate of appropriateness. Anything that happens in a commercial building anywhere in this part of the city goes through architectural review anyways. So there's a real, a subtle difference in the review process, but essentially, it's the same.
Okay. And for those buildings that we haven't done, have you done all the contributing factors of each building, or is that not part of that?
That level of detail is something that we could further emphasize. Some of it is showing in the criteria listing that we provided for each building. There could be, simply always be more defined in terms of the character-defining features, but we have outlined at least the minimum amount that would make those buildings important.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember DeHart.
Can, in one of your slides, you talked about the theme. Can you explain that again?
When you have a historic district, you're looking at buildings that have something in common. If they were not of something in common, you'd simply designate them as individual historic sites. But when you're looking at a district, you're really looking at this group that is close enough geographically that they share something in common. In this case, it's that it explains and demonstrates what happened as this city really grew from a tiny little desert village to a resort city. And so that theme is that thing that these buildings have in common.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we're opening the public hearing. Public is invited to speak for up to two minutes. Do we have any public speakers?
We have no public speakers.
All right. Well, then the public hearing is closed. Do we have any additional discussion or questions from council? Mayor Pro Tem?
I just want to make one comment on the, on the commercial buildings, and I understand the, has to go through review. But obviously, these commercial buildings were built 100 to 70 years ago. So the needs have obviously changed in terms of they're open year-round. There's different kinds of lighting that's needed. We have our climates getting warmer. So just to understand that it's important to recognize it's a historic district, but that, you know, we don't want to make it impossible for people to keep doing business in a city, especially if we try to make ourselves more year-round and more commercially viable in today's market. Thank you.
Absolutely. And I think we have a good track record with our current historic site preservation board and our new HPO of really facilitating those changes.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. If we can have a vote by council. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. We are going to move on to a break because we do have a couple more items, and one of them, I think, will take a significant amount of time. If we can be back by 7:43, that would be great. Thank you. Just for the public, item 2C is being pushed to the next meeting, and so we are moving on to our business and legislative agenda. The next item is item 3A, to approve a second amendment to the lease with Coachella Valley Economic Partnership for office space at 3111 East Talkwoods Canyon Way. Can you have a staff report, please?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem. Jay Verada, Director of Community and Economic Development. As you know, the City of Palm Springs and Coachella Valley Economic Partnership have collaborated on the Innovation Hub since 2011. Currently, CVEP staff only uses about 788 square feet of their 5,000-square-foot office base in the building that they're using for their CVEP headquarters, and they are requesting that the billing rate be adjusted to reflect that. They also propose to manage the building on behalf of the city, and the city will also utilize space in the building for city staff. CVEP would like to use the rents that they collect to pay for property operating expenses, and those rents would come from the IHUB clients that still utilize the space in the building at 3111 East Talkwoods. Bless you. According to the terms of the original lease, the lease may be terminated by the city with 120 days written notice on the anniversary date of the commencement date, which is February This is the space that CVEP is currently using. Their operating cost for this space is $126,000, half of which is paid for rent to the city in the amount of $65,100. The remaining expenses of $61,092 are attributed to insurance, $21,000, janitorial services, $15,000, disposal fees at $6,000, phone and internet at $4,200, security system at $1,800, utilities, water, drinking water, copier lease, supplies, and shredding kind of make up the balance of that. By allowing CVEP to use a rental income of approximately $62,000, they should be able to pay the remaining operating costs of $61,000. So what's proposed is a reutilization of the space, and you could see in the green section that that would be the 788 square feet for two offices that CVEP would actually be using for their staff. It also shows a space the city would utilize in the blue area, which includes 11 offices, about 1,440 square feet of open space that will be converted to new offices, and one conference room. IHUB client space would consist of a reception area, and this is the beige or peach color, would consist of a reception area, one conference room, and 13 offices. Sorry, and a training room and two storage rooms. Shared spaces, which are not color-coded, but they're within the beige area, consist of bathrooms, the employee kitchen, and lounge. And just to show you some images of the building we're talking about, that's 3111 East Talkwoods Canyon, right across the street from City Hall. Here's what the kitchen and lounge look like. Part of the same room, but the employee break area. And when I mentioned the 1,400 square feet that will be utilized to construct new offices, that would be this area here, which is kind of an open space for an office, and part of this area includes this part here, too. And a typical office in the building looks a bit like this. So council, CVEP is here to help answer questions. I can also help answer any questions you may have. Please let us know what you're thinking.
Thank you very much for that report, Jay. Do we have any questions from council? Mayor Protem.
I just want to confirm one thing, which I have asked. In the staff report, you have a funding proposal from May 19th, 2023, that includes the IHUB and other places outside of this. That is not under consideration, is that correct?
That is not under consideration, that's correct.
Okay, that's just for information right now.
Information was part of the proposal and still under discussion with CVEP.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember DeHart, you had a comment? Go ahead.
I just want to, hats off to CVEP and staff for the forward-thinking and certainly for being able to accommodate the city offices down the road and at a significant cost savings for the city. So I think good work, good forward planning. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Holstich.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you to CVEP for their work, really appreciate their partnership with the City of Palm Springs and their operation of the IHUB and these offices and all the work that they do for the whole region. I just have a question about if all of the open spaces and the office space will be used by city staff. Jay, I know you're aware, we got a number of requests from nonprofits about the need for office space in the City of Palm Springs, TODEC, which supports residents with services, also Inland County Legal Services, our legal aid, asked about office space, this is right by the courthouse, it would be a good option if we had even like an open or rotating or some sort of option to provide to the community. So I'm just wondering if there's open spaces or if we're using all of those open offices for city staff, which is also a need as we've been looking for spaces for many years.
Deputy City Manager.
I've sent you enough emails about this, so.
Yes.
Councilwoman Holstich, I'll go ahead and respond to that.
Thank you.
I've been engaged in doing space planning for City Hall as we've hired additional employees. We have to find spaces for them to work. If you've ever been down in our Human Resources Department, or in our Finance Department, or even Development Services, we have people sitting on top of people sitting on top of people. So in terms of the space that the city is going to be using, we do have the vast majority of it spoken for. I do have a couple of cubicle spaces that will allow future expansion, but we need pretty much every inch of it, unfortunately.
And councilmember, I might add, you know, maybe a question for the CVEP folks who are here is, you know, they have a number of sub-tenants in that space designated in yellow. Now, I don't know if every one of those spaces is fully occupied right now. They, they may be, but your comment is just something for us to think about for the future if something comes available.
Thank you. On the mic, please, if you can, just for the public watching along and listening along.
My wife doesn't need a mic, but I probably do.
We do need mics.
You do in this instance.
All right. So we have hosted.
And if you can introduce yourself.
Okay, Joe Wallace, CEO of CVEP.
Thank you, Joe.
And so we have hosted nonprofits in the building before, and we try to keep our rates very reasonable, you know, like 300 to 500 per month. And, you know, it's worked out for us, it's worked out for them. So as we have openings, send them over. We'd love to talk to them, and we're not going to be completely full on day one. We probably have six or seven of the 13 available offices that will be filled, but it's an opportunity. So thank you.
Thank you. That's great to know, and I know our community listening will also be interested. I know the Chamber did a co-working space, and that filled up really, really quickly, and so it's always a need for office space, and it could just be people aren't always aware. So appreciate your work. Can I ask you another question?
Yes.
Because I was going to ask, are you going anywhere? Is this, you know, a change in just the dynamics of who needs office space and, you know, how office and remote work is changing? I just, you know, I know you're, you have an important relationship with the City of Palm Springs, and I was concerned to see a smaller term, shorter term, and smaller footprint.
I don't expect us to go anywhere. We have, so we used to have One Future with us, and we had, you know, they had more employees than we did. So our need for people has reduced. We've had some people who left because, like, people were being paid way more than we can pay them, so, and we weren't able to really replace them. But I'd say if anything, we're about as small as we'll ever be, and Palm Springs has been a great partner. This is my first offices, when I moved out from Indiana, we're in the building across the hall, and when the IHUB started, it was literally just me for two years and bringing people in and trying to get some companies to help diversify the economy.
Thank you for your work.
We continue to keep it up.
Thank you for the team. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else before I?
Any other questions or comments from council? Any other questions or comments from Council? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion, if we can get a second and a vote. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Jay, and thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, the next item on the agenda is Item 3B, Second Reading and Adoption of Ordinance Number 2077 of the City of Palm Springs, adding Chapter 5.89 to the Palm Springs Municipal Code relating to sidewalk vending and amending Chapter 5.48 relative to commercial solicitation. Can we have a staff report, please?
Madam Mayor, Mayor Protam, and members of Council, we have on the agenda second reading of the Sidewalk Vending Ordinance, and as I'm introducing this, Ms. Pre, if you could hand me the clicker for the PowerPoint. Thank you. I don't want to go into all of the details of the ordinance this evening, but rather I want to focus on just a little bit of our history and then some of the changes that have been proposed over the course of these discussions. By way of background, we have had this ordinance before us on three separate occasions. First, back in November of 2022, then again in March of this year, and in June of this year. Based on the discussion at your June meeting, we did make a number of changes to the ordinance. One of those was relative to clarifying the clear sidewalk path that must be maintained. We added language to state that it must be unobstructed, and so what that means is that customers who queue or any of the equipment that the vendor may be using or anything that they are selling cannot be in that accessible path, and so we did add that language there. In June, we also had a discussion about the distance separation from farmers' markets, swap meets, and special events, and that was changed from a 500-foot separation distance down to a 200-foot separation distance. In addition, we looked at a restriction on Palm Canyon and Arenas Road, and weekend restrictions were requested from October to April, but only between the hours of 4:00 p.m. and 11:00 p.m. In terms of that restriction, I just want to clarify that the area in question would be on Palm Canyon between Baristo on the south and Alejo on the north, and it's on both sides of Palm Canyon, but it does not apply to the side streets, it's only on the Palm Canyon frontage only. For Arenas, it's between Indian Canyon and Cayenne Celia on both sides of Arenas, but just in that one block area between Indian and Encelia. Another thing we discussed in June was relative to the fines. What staff has done is decrease those fines by 50% as requested during the council discussion. And then in terms of the fines for operating without having a business license, those have been reduced by 50% for the first violation, but we've kept them at 100% for the second and third violations. We also made other minor corrections and clarifications to the ordinance, removed gender-specific language, et cetera. So those are the principal changes that we have made to the ordinance itself. There's a number of things I want to discuss with you, and part of the reason in doing this is to clarify some of the questions and comments I've had from stakeholders and members of the public about the draft ordinance, and also to clarify some of our procedures and processes. First of all, I'd like to talk about the permitting process from the County of Riverside Department of Environmental Health. In our previous discussions, they hadn't quite yet established their requirements for compact mobile food vending operations or sidewalk vendors. They do now have those permit processes in place, and I'm happy to report that we have our first licensee that is going to be operating in Demuth Park, that has been licensed through Environmental Health and also received a business license from the city. And so we're happy to have those requirements in place now, so that way we can adequately educate our sidewalk vendors and put them through that process, assist them with that process, as well as providing protection to the general public by having those regulations in place. In terms of our licensing process moving forward, applicants to sell food will be required to obtain their permits through Environmental Health first before applying for a business license. That way, the city can verify that indeed they do have the proper permits from Environmental Health in place, and so that's one of the things that I wanted to point out, and I've had many questions about that in the past. We have also tried to incorporate where we can consistent regulations with the Department of Environmental Health. So for example, there's language about having a trash receptacle within 20 feet, that's language that we've copied from Environmental Health. There are also other standards, such as that, that we have carried over. Part of that is for consistency in terms of enforcement, but one of the things I do want to point out is that city and our code compliance officers can't be responsible for ensuring food safety regulations. We don't have the training, we don't have the equipment, and we are not the right personnel in order to do that. However, Environmental Health has conducted inspections and done enforcement in conjunction with the city over a couple of weekends in the past, and they will be the ones who continue to inspect relative to food safety regulations. Another thing I wanted to talk about is licensing assistance and education. Once we adopt an ordinance, we will then provide letters to any of the vendors who are operating within the city of Palm Springs, whether or not they actually have a business license now. In the letter, we will include a copy of the regulations. We will also provide them assistance in terms of applying for the proper permits, and then give them a time period in which to obtain those permits. What we want to do is to be able to offer to those who are operating currently the ability to become fully compliant with our regulations as well as environmental health regulations. In addition, we are in the process of preparing step-by-step licensing brochures and also a brochure with our operational standards, so that way our applicants will understand easily how to obtain a license as well as operational procedures. Unfortunately, our ordinance itself may not be very user-friendly, and so for that reason, we do want to prepare brochures that make that easier for them to do that. We don't have those ready yet because we understand that there may be additional modifications to the ordinance, so again, we'll have those available to go once we solidify and have the ordinance in its final form. Another thing that our Code Compliance Division has proposed to do is to hold workshops. The Department of Special Programs has done that in the past with cannabis and other programs and vacation rentals, and so we think that will be another helpful tool to assist those who want to obtain their license and their business permits, to be able to have one-on-one interaction with staff members to understand what processes they need to go through. So we think that will also be a helpful tool as we get ready to implement the ordinance. We've put together implementation meetings, we've had three meetings to date, we have members of our Code Compliance Division, we've had a representative from Environmental Health, our Finance Department, who issues business licenses, our Planning Department, and our Police Department at those implementation meetings. So it is a citywide effort in terms of getting ready to put the ordinance in place. Speaking of enforcement, I also want to clarify this for the public. There have been concerns that even if the city does adopt regulations, that we won't be able to enforce. I want to state that we do have code compliance officers who are available on weekends until 1:00 a.m. We also have our Police Department personnel who are available after 1:00 a.m. As I had mentioned, Environmental Health will periodically conduct inspections with city staff, but what I'm hoping is that our education efforts that I spoke about with the last slide will help to prevent the need for enforcement, that by having licensed vendors, they'll have a clear understanding of what the regulations are, and through that education process, they'll know how they can safely operate, and so that there isn't that fear of enforcement, but rather will have an educated public in terms of the vendors who are out there. One of the things that I think is very important as we look at our regulations, we have reduced the clearance on our sidewalks. I think it's important that we keep in mind public safety as we look at adding sidewalk vendors to our public space. With that in mind, what we want to do is make it easier for vendors to operate on private property. And how we do that currently is through a land use permit process. It's already in our zoning code, we don't need to update it for vendors who may be contemplating vending in the sidewalk areas, they can already do that on private property. I think one of the biggest impediments is the cost of obtaining that land use permit. So what we're proposing to do is, rather than charging the fee for a major land use permit, which is what we would currently do, that fee is $1,600, we would, by policy, charge sidewalk vendors $438 for a land use permit to vend on private property. So that significantly reduces the costs, hopefully that will serve as an incentive, and then also by locating the vendors on private property, that alleviates our concerns of the limited area that we have in public rights of way. It makes it possible for vendors to actually use the 10x10 tents on private property without encroaching into that accessible zone. So there's a number of reasons why we want to incentivize vending on private property. It's primarily looking at our public rights of way and protecting public safety in the sidewalk area. Those were a couple of points that I wanted to mention to you. There have been quite a number of letters that have brought up additional points, and we are available to go through those if you'd like to, as you have questions about some of the comments that have been made in the public. One of the other things that I want to do as I close out my presentation to you this evening is just talk a little bit about where we go after the adoption of the ordinance. In the past, we've talked about creating sidewalk vending zones as areas where we want to encourage sidewalk vendors, and we appreciate our advocates who suggested that to us initially. What we would want to do is pursue that further after we adopt the ordinance. We would be looking at areas that would be adjacent to our highly-traveled public areas in the city, so looking at public plazas adjacent to the downtown area or public parks, maybe some of the areas that we could consider as sidewalk vending zones, creating those spaces and assisting applicants who may want to participate in those areas. Another suggestion that we've had came from one of our code compliance managers, and he recommended that we organize special events centered on sidewalk vendors and mobile food trucks, creating that as a special event, obviously not on the same night as Village Fest, we wouldn't want to conflict with that, but on other weekend evenings where we don't have any other events, might be a good opportunity to set those up and specifically make those available for our food vendors and mobile food trucks. I think that would be particularly helpful during the summer months when some restaurants close and we don't have as many options for outdoor dining as we might like, and so those are some of the things that we would like to bring forward to you in the future upon adoption of the ordinance. With that, that concludes my presentation to you this evening. I do have Mr. Albert Maldonado from Best Bestin Krieger, who assisted us in the preparation of the ordinance and is available to answer any questions you might have. And again, we're happy to answer any questions you might have relative to the ordinance or any of the public comment and questions that you've received. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Flynn, for that report. Do we have comments and questions? Councilmember DeHart?
Huge appreciation to staff and the amount of time that's been spent on this ordinance, and to Council, you know, that we've addressed the idea, three meetings, and now we're on number four. You know, I think we've spoken about education during this process and how important that was going to be, so I really appreciate the staff report and the emphasis that is being placed on providing that education in the step-by-step process. Is the staff workshop going to be committed or be able to be performed in Spanish?
Yes, we do have code compliance officers who are fluent in Spanish and would be able to do that in Spanish as well.
And how do you get that letter, the initial letter that gives the potential vendor information? How do they even get that?
First of all, we do have a handful of vendors who currently have business licenses, so will make use of the contact information that they've provided us. In addition, code compliance will physically visit every vendor to provide the letter as well for those who don't have a business license.
And the educational information, and in particular, the step-by-step guide that's being, going to be prepared, I don't want to assume that's going to be online, but will we have it on the city website?
Absolutely. We will have that brochure available physically. We do have money put aside in our budget to actually print those. We will also make them available online. The physical copies we'll also use to distribute to any unlicensed vendors.
So, you know, sometimes our website isn't the easiest to find things on it, even for myself, so I wonder if, could we not highlight this, you know, sidewalk vending, you know, on one of our main pages for a while, a year or something, just so it's there and people can easily see it and find it, because it is challenging to try to sometimes dig through and know the right department.
Yeah.
That you're supposed to be looking under, so I would, if we could do that, that would be great. And I think that making it easier for someone to vend on private property has been a really good step. How does a customer know, or PD, or code enforcement, how do they know that that vendor is, you know, they've got everything, they've got their permits, they've got the land use permit? How do they know that that's a legit vendor?
There's a couple of different ways. From the city perspective, we do request that they keep a photocopy of their business license with them. That is one of the things that's very helpful in terms of enforcement, and that prevents a lot of misunderstandings. Another thing from Environmental Health on a compact mobile food cart, they have their acronym for that, and I can never remember exactly what that stands for, but they will be required to have a decal on the cart itself, so that indicates to the public that they have their health permit. And then finally, as we go about issuing licenses for vendors, finance will be notifying planning and Police Department and code compliance on the, those vendors that have licenses, so they will be able to access that information as they're out in the field.
Yeah, excellent. I've got a comment on the spacing, but it doesn't specifically affect the ordinance, so I will make it at the end, or when do I do that? So the, my concern that I introduced, I think at the last meeting, yeah, on So my concern that I introduced, I think at the last meeting, yeah, in June, was we have a standard already in our ordinance for several different, for sidewalk dining and for merchants to have their advertising A-frames. And we've used that standard and we've based that standard on, you know, the objective standards that we've been guided on where for health, safety, and welfare was a 72-inch distance. And I hear we've got some good support for the 48-inch unobstructed clearance now. I just feel that as we go forward, and hopefully this passes tonight, but that council and staff could look at modifying the current 72-inch requirement that's on the books for existing uses that was based on health, safety, welfare, ease of traffic, congestion and all that, that we change those 72-inch requirements to 48 so that we've got the same requirement for everybody. And there's nothing, no one's being looked at any different than the other person. So that's my comment. And it's taken a long time to get to this point, but I'm certainly in support of the ordinance that's in front of us today.
Mayor Protem?
I'm just going to make some comments because I appreciate all the work that's gone into this and our fourth discussion about it. And, you know, I think one of the things, the way I've heard this from comments from everybody is nobody's 100% happy. And that usually means that this is a good ordinance then because there is no way to make everybody happy. I think, you know, the commitment of the city to do education and outreach and support for these businesses, quite honestly, it's more than I think we've done for other types of businesses. But I think it's great so that we make sure it's done properly. I'm not sure, I don't know all these, if other cities have done to what you're proposing, but I think it's terrific. I do believe that with any ordinance, where something new that we have to think about that maybe a year or two down the line, we may have to make revisions to it. I mean, this is something brand new. It's a whole new from the state. I do, you know, I do think, I'm very happy that we have a street vendor in Jemuth Park because I think parks are particularly good place for it. I have seen, unfortunately, some of the vendors that have been out already have not obviously had their, gone through this process. And I think I'm looking forward to seeing them, you know, be much, much in compliance with the county's health guidelines. I understand the concerns about, you know, where it is downtown and other areas. But I will say I've been to various places where the streets do get crowded. And I think there is a real safety reason to do that. But I do hope that this passes. I think it's a really good ordinance. Staff, I know, has put tremendous amount of work and a tremendous amount of time responding to people on it. And I am hopeful that this goes through so that we can get the process in place. I guess it would take 30 days. And we can start the education, get the materials out, and commit that we're going to assess and look at the industry, what happens over the next year or so, and see if revisions are necessary. So thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments or questions? That's fine. You can think. Yeah, thank you, everyone, for your comments. I do think that a big part of this is this continued engagement. We do have folks here who work directly with street vendors and immigrant organizations giving us feedback on this. And it certainly isn't perfect as it is. We heard requests for 36 inches instead of 48 inches, changing the timeframes for the weekend hours to be a little more limited. I think the requests that are being made are reasonable. And what I'm hearing from my colleagues is those, that they like what is in front of them. But I think the big thing is that we're, for us to continue to be engaged with these groups, to be watching these types of things that they're bringing forward to us. So if we pass this ordinance tonight, kind of keeping those things in mind as we're looking at these vendors to say, okay, maybe is 48 inches too much? Should we reduce to 36? Are these hours reasonable? Or should they be changed? And changing them as needed in the future. I also want to be mindful that the city of L.A. is going to trial soon on this issue. I believe that's starting in February. So it'll be important for us to, our legal team, to be watching that. And I know you all will, just in case we do need to make changes sooner than maybe we anticipate. As we have discussed at length in the past, we do want to be in accordance with all of our state laws and regulations. All right, I think that's it from me. And thank you again to the activist groups that are here who are working with immigrants and the sidewalk vendors. I really appreciate all of the work that you do and that you're always here and engaged with not just the city staff, but the community as well and the businesses. Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Holstich?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Really appreciate the work that's done on this. Thank you to staff for going through the wringer with us and for the community organizations. I know it's been a long haul and we had some changes. And so appreciate the compromise. I think that this results in, this is hard because we're really doing this first. A number of cities have also, but we're following state law. And we don't know what the courts will rule and, you know, what the exposure is and all of that. So I think we've come to a compromise. I think we all agree that we want to support small local businesses in Palm Springs. And we absolutely want to support entrepreneurs and startups and micro businesses. And really excited about, you know, how many, you know, that people want to start their businesses in Palm Springs and succeed here. And we all want that. So I appreciate the work we're going to do on outreach. Would love to see us work on vending zones because I think that's really what's going to solve this, is some agreed-upon areas where we can, you know, we want that activity that's safe and there's, you know, space to do it and all of that. And so I am looking forward to seeing that. We've talked to some stakeholders that are working directly with food, excuse me, with food vendors. And there's a lot of work that's going on. So I look forward to the continued partnership as we hopefully build out some vending zones that work for the city.
All right, thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Asena, do we have a motion and a second on this item? See a motion? I can second. Okay, motion passes four to one. Thank you very much, everyone. The next item is public comment on non-agenda items. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the City Council of Items of General Interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. Although the City Council values your comments pursuant to the Brown Act, it generally cannot take any action on items not listed on the agenda. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. Our first speaker is Gerald Ford, followed by Jordan. No, no speaker. I'm seeing not, seeing no's, okay. All right, then we, okay, we also have Zachary Daniel Stone.
All right, let's do it. Character mildly stressed Zachary. Let's see. Congrats to Agua Caliente on setting a grand opening date for their museum, November 3rd. So I'm glad they were able to finally figure that one out for all of us. It's been a while, right? All right, let's see. Looked on the agenda. I was so excited. It's normal when I got the email. And then I was disappointed because I didn't see anything about homelessness or affordable housing. And I was like, huh, what is going on here? Because I know it's a priority of this council. So I was just going to say, once again, if we could establish a homelessness and, you know, affordable housing task force, that'd be good. And we could keep it on the agenda and up front and up center. So just something else to think about and remember, it cost the city absolutely nothing to do that. All right, one minute to go. Let's see. Challenge, between now and the next meeting, if you would all go use the porta-potties in the shower over at the access center, just check that one out, especially the porta-potties, and see if those things need to be cleaned a little more often. So between now and the next meeting. All right, now the fun stuff. Got 40 seconds left. Killing it. Book club this month, library. It's going to be Thursday, September 21st, 2:00 p.m. in the Learning Center. Bowling Alone: The Collapse and Revival of the American Community by Robert D. Putnam. This thing is really, really sad, honestly, for me in a lot of ways because I read this thing years ago. It's one I think you guys should pick up. Got eight seconds left. Also, I'd forgotten all about the World Dominak. Go pick this thing up. This thing is interesting. I had forgotten all about it. All right, that's my time.
Thank you. And we have Juan Espinoza on Zoom.
For all the work on this ordinance, specifically, I'm speaking to the street vending ordinance. I appreciate all of the improvements made to the ordinance and understand the work that's being done. I also work to support small businesses and understand the challenges of running a business and can fully understand concerns that have been voiced. With that said, I do think that the state law is clear. And there's a section that reads that for purposes of this section, perceived community animus or economic competition does not constitute an objective health, safety, or welfare concern. Therefore, the ordinance tonight directly violates state law and is not in compliance and is a legal liability for the city to consider and to consider wasting of resources to fight against immigrant communities makes absolutely no sense. If you have immigrant groups speaking out and asking for you to improve the ordinance, letting you know that this is at the behest of specific businesses in downtown and that you are making decisions for that specific community, violating state law and you're still choosing to move forward is saying a lot. And it's something that the council should be very aware of and go home with tonight and know that tonight you did not stand with immigrant working-class communities. You made a decision in favor of specific economic interests. And that represents the city council that we have right now in Palm Springs, and it's unfortunate. And I'd also like to mention that there were concerns about workers' rights and labor violations raised and fairness in treatment of businesses in Palm Springs. And I grew up in Palm Springs in a working-class family, have a lot of family members that worked in hotels and restaurants. And the city has done virtually nothing to support workers' rights, to fight wage theft, to hold restaurants accountable, to hold hotels accountable. So I look forward to working with the city and raising those concerns and seeing every single council member on this council be a champion to fight wage theft and hold all businesses in Palm Springs accountable. Thank you.
It wasn't even two minutes. Thank you very much. Do we have any other public comment? Go ahead. He gets to speak into the mic over there.
Ladies and gentlemen of Palm Springs City Council, today I stand before you to address a pressing issue that affects not only our community but our collective humanity, the growing crisis of homelessness. It is a crisis that is tearing the very fabric of our city, and we must confront it with urgency and compassion. The lack of affordable housing and the lack of livable wages in this desert, it's a seasonal place of operation still. Locals are having a hard time making it with the increase of rent. More people, like young people, are leaving the desert because of this. I know that there's like some plans that you guys were talking about, building a conference center in competition to the arena. I mean, I don't know, like, what kind of jobs that's going to bring in because, like... Anyways, furthermore, affordable housing is not a luxury. It is a basic human need. The lack of affordable housing options is pushing more and more individuals and families out of the desert. We must prioritize the creation of affordable housing units to allow our residents to live with dignity and security. Some may argue that these solutions are costly, but the cost of inaction is far greater. The cost of emergency services, healthcare, and the toll on our community's well-being cannot be ignored. My partner was assaulted by a random homeless guy at a 7-Eleven. He's still on the streets. We drove by him. Like, she was going to work and she had to see the guy who punched her in the face. What are we doing about the homeless problem? What are we doing for our locals?
Thank you. And we have Paul Ortega on Zoom. They turn it off when it hits two minutes. We have Paul Ortega on Zoom.
I'm sorry. Thank you. So I'm Paul Ortega. I am the board president of the Desert Water Agency. And we're grateful to have a really strong working relationship with your team. And in the spirit of that coordination, I wanted to inform you about something that's coming up on the horizon. The State Water Board of California began its formal rulemaking process for a regulation that will give Desert Water Agency and hundreds of other water districts in California an objective or in a budget. And this objective is an amount of water that the state deems as efficient use for residential properties and other areas within its dedicated irrigation meters. The draft regulation isn't a result of Desert Water Agency not being able to provide or supply water because Desert Water Agency has been investing in effective management for decades so that we have a sustainable supply. As drafted, the regulations will put Desert Water Agency in the position of reducing water sold considerably in the years to come throughout the city, including at city sites. From our initial calculations, it appears that our customers would have to reduce their water use by about 1.9 billion gallons a year, which is equivalent to removing about as much grass as we find at Sunrise Park and the baseball field by more than 30 times. And given that Palm Springs is Desert Water Agency's largest customer, we wanted to let you know that more aggressive water conservation requirements may be ahead. After the regulation is enacted, Desert Water Agency will be subjected to clients, to compliance ordinances, and steep fines if we exceed those objectives. So we're working to ensure that the regulations appropriately consider such local nuances like heat, flash storms, seasonal population, and short-term rentals. We welcome the city to engage in that process alongside with us. Our staff has shared dates for public hearings and comment letter deadlines with your team. And I will be attending a public hearing on October 4th in Sacramento where the Desert Water Agency will provide testimony on those regulations. Given how much these regulations could impact the city, its residents, and its businesses, we wanted to share this opportunity to get involved. We value our partnership on this, and of course, so many other things. And we're looking forward as well to having you, as our council members, attend a future tour with regard to what the agency does for the city of Palm Springs and the rest of the Western Coachella Valley. Thank you.
Thank you. Final comment is David Rios.
Good evening, council, and thank you again. I wasn't going to say a comment, but after hearing a couple of the public voice their opinions, I do want to say thank you, guys, for a number of reasons. What I heard tonight was incredible. It was not only giving us resources and making sure that the health is number one with our food vendors and allowing them to be here. And it's going to, and thinking outside the box so that we can create other areas that we do have more street vendors, that we're making them an actual event. I think these are things for us to look forward to. Thank you also for affordable housing. I work with Martha's Village. I sit on the board. And what we're doing is breaking ground. And thank you, guys, for allowing an... And thank you guys for allowing an additional $5 million to assist because the costs have come up. I want to thank you all that I came from minimum means, I came from welfare, no parents, and I was able to open up my own hotel here, a boutique hotel, with the assistance of the city and allowing to be able to apply for grants. And so if the city and the people that are watching and hearing us, my best advice is go onto, not the Nextdoor app, but go onto the Daily Post. And that allows you guys to actually see what's been approved and what hasn't been approved, what city allowances that are doing for the homeless, unsheltered, and what we're doing as a community. And that's the awareness that we can actually bring, because I don't think we have enough people advocating saying, we did pass this, we do have this coming in. And for me to see all this, it's a joy because we are the leading front. And so I guess we are blessed to be here in Palm Springs. And thank you all, thank you Chief, for what you guys do. But everyone really needs to see what's being approved and go on the Daily Post because it shows it there, black and white. But thank you guys all.
Thank you very much. All right, that concludes our public comment. The next item is City Council and City Manager requests for upcoming agenda development. And before I pass it over to you, City Manager, I do want to just mention that we did have a member from Find Food Bank who I think wasn't able to stay, but they did want to announce that September is Hunger Action Month. It's a great opportunity to think about donating to Find Food Bank, to supporting local businesses that are also supporting Find Food Bank, like Burbank 849 and others that you can find on the Find Food Bank website. Just wanted to do that little plug since I know they, they had hoped to do it themselves. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of Council. And also, I want to thank the council members for allowing us to do all three of those presentations at the beginning of the council meeting. Important stuff, we hadn't met in a while, but we wanted to get all that information out to the community. Looking at our next meeting in a couple of weeks, I know we've had a number of, a bit of discussion about the status of the cannabis industry in the community, and so we'll be bringing back an update to you about where things stand right now, and then allow you to give us some further guidance on, on any thoughts that you have about that. We'll also be hopefully bringing forward a proposed adoption, a proposed, our proposed housing element and adoption of it, that's required by state law. We've gotten comments back from them, we've incorporated those comments from Housin and Community Development, and will hopefully be able to present that to you for adoption in a couple of weeks. We have the one appeal of a cannabis permit, and then we're also hoping to bring forward the service agreement with Martha's Village for the management of our navigation center, the early access center, and continued operation of the, of the access center, early entry, and the navigation center. So we're working with them on all three parts of that. And finally, we know that there's been, you've had some discussion about parklets, and we want to bring back some discussion for you to give us some feedback and direction on parklets. Those are business items in addition to the normal consent items. Just looking out a little further, we, we know that we need to bring back some information to go on food trucks, but that's farther on down the road. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Do we have comments or agenda items from Council, Councilmember DeHart?
So what, what do we need to do to align the 72-inch clearance that we've had on the books with the 48-inch now that can match the sidewalk vending?
What we will need to do is to bring forward an amendment to the zoning code as the 40, excuse me, the 72-inch requirement is in our sign code currently. In terms of the outdoor dining that exists by policy, what we might do is codify that as well in terms of making that change. Any amendment to the zoning code requires that the Planning Commission review and make a recommendation to the city council. So at the direction of city council, we'll go ahead and begin that process, draft the ordinance, take it to Planning Commission, and then bring it to you.
Excellent, thank you.
Do we need a vote to send that, or do you want to have a discussion first? What would be the process? Typically, we're voting to have three votes to add something to an agenda.
We're, yeah, if there's, if there's a majority support for that, then we move forward with it.
Yeah. Somebody to, so the, the request is that we, we change, we have one standard of what is defined as the safe pathway, the distance that's required for street food vendors, but also the A-Frame sign ordinance that currently is saying that we need 72-inch. So tonight, we just approved something that's contrary to what we have on the books already. And I'm just saying that we need to have them aligned, so there's not, there's not gonna be issues coming down the road.
It's a cleanup item. It's really just a cleanup item to make sure that our code is, is matching.
For me, if I can, I would just, I think, want more information before directing, like a discussion item, before directing a big process to go forward, because that's a significant use of staff resources and Planning Commission and all of that. I do support, in general, having our ordinances be similar and have the same rules, I think is fair, absolutely. I think there's a little bit different dynamics. I saw the email, like, for example, for Joy Meredith, and I worked on the subcommittee on the signage and the 72 inches, and then we worked for a number of years on outdoor vending for brick and mortar retail, and there's just been a lot of work that's been done on that for, you know, I'm interested to hear what council thinks, but for me, it's a further, it's a big discussion because it's, there's different uses. I mean, I understand it's just ADA, but it is reducing the ADA access on the sidewalks for street vending. We're very limited by state law, and it was asking us to be less restrictive for, you know, retail businesses, which it just, the signage, it just has a lot of intimate details. I had to like walk downtown, we measured the signs, we went to all the retail places where there's curb cuts, and it's just, it's a little bit of a can of worms, so not opposing it, I'm just saying there's, there's a lot that will come up in that process.
I think the can of worms was opened with the ordinance that we just approved tonight. So we can't treat one group separately, then we're treating another group. And that's why I'm suggesting that we've, we need to align it so there's consistency in our ordinances.
I'm not sure I can, I have an A-Frame sign permit, so I'm not sure I can respond on or participate in this. I don't know.
I think that's a safe bet.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I, I don't think we have majority of support yet, but if we, we can still further discuss with staff what that would look like and, and still look into it more, and then bring it back up at another meeting and see if we want to continue on.
Right, would staff have a recommendation? Could you email us information about that later, and we can look at it and then decide at a future meeting?
Certainly. I think what might be helpful is if we prepare a memo for council on the issue of the clearance. That will give you a little bit of background and history and what exists in our ordinance currently. That way, you might be able to make a more informed decision about whether or not you want to proceed.
Right, thank you very much. Councilwoman Middleton.
Thank you. There are a few items that I would like to have brought back to council for us to take a position on. Earlier today, the state legislature approved ACA 1, which is a constitutional amendment that will go on the March ballot. It was sponsored by Assembly Member Aguilar Currie. It was very, very heavily promoted by the League of California Cities. ACA 1, if approved by voters in March, will reduce the threshold for a special tax to be approved from 2/3 to 58%, which is consistent with the threshold that school districts are required to achieve and would certainly be a much fairer process when it comes to the approval of special taxes. Secondly, ACA 13, which is sponsored by Assembly Member Ward, is on the floor of the State Assembly as we speak. It is expected to pass. It was approved by the Senate with a slight amendment, which earlier today, ACA 13, will change the voting threshold that is required where someone is proposing an initiative that a 2/3 vote be required going forward. This would require that you obtain a 2/3 vote in order to require a 2/3 vote. As it stands right now, 50% plus one vote can require that in the future, anyone seeking to approve a tax get not 50% plus one, but get 2/3 vote. It's only fair that a 2/3, that if you're going to require a 2/3 vote, you can obtain a 2/3 vote. So much of this is necessitated by the extreme measure that the California Business Round Table has put forward that would require for municipalities to raise any taxes under any circumstances or raise fees, that the vote be put to the public on all fees and all taxes, and a requirement that 2/3 vote be obtained in all circumstances. And I would remind council that if that law had been in effect when Measure J was approved by 58% of Palm Springs voters, Measure J would have been defeated.
Thank you. So you're asking to have those on the agenda in terms of letters of support?
Correct.
Or our statement, okay. I would support having that on an upcoming agenda.
Yes.
Thank you for raising that. Do we have other comments? Mayor Prette?
Yep, a couple, a couple things. So I know we're having a cannabis presentation at the next meeting, and Mayor Gardner and I have been working on some proposed changes to the ordinance, and I just wanted to ask that we get permission to have staff help draft something, either not necessarily before the next meeting, but help work on this. I'm not a lawyer, so I'm not really good at drafting. So I'm asking for staff, to have staff help on drafting, incorporating our ideas into draft revision of the ordinance.
Well, Councilman, or Mayor Prette Bernstein, we're, we'll certainly be working on our update presentation, and if council wishes, we're, staff will be more than happy to work with you and the mayor on
Thank you.
Something that the full council can react to, if that's the wishes of the full council.
We, this is an update, but we did discuss at one point as council and agree that we would, that Mayor and I would work on updates. What the request now is that we actually need staff help to do this, because it's a lot, it's a 130-page ordinance, and we really just have certain changes. I know Councilmember Holstage has brought up taxes, there's been other things, so.
I think there was.
There was, okay. I've, I've an email that we're staffed on, that's fine, that's great then.
Yeah, I think the comment is we just want clear direction from council
Okay.
That you're, that you would like us to work on changing the ordinance
Okay.
And work with the two of you.
Okay, thank you. My next comment, I didn't, I
Sorry, this new process is hard because it's like new information and deciding on the spot. So can you say a little bit more either now or at the next meeting when we do the general update about what the updates are? Are you, what parts of the ordinance are you working on changing? I mean, what should the process be for staff?
There's various, there's, there's various points in business on the ordinance that had to do, some of which various council members have raised. And since the ordinance hasn't been updated in a while, was to see if we could propose those to have council review, not major changes, certain ones that we would do, so that instead of just addressing the taxes or one part of it, we address the whole thing at once. And that was really the request. But I did not, my, my request tonight was whether it was okay to be, start engaging staff time to help do this, as opposed to just us doing it on our own. And that was my answer, so thank you. The other thing I wanted to mention was, I know we're having a presentation, I believe, upcoming on the Sister City, but Councilmember Holstage and I accompanied Mayor Garner for the signing of the Sister City Agreement in San Miguel de Ande in August, which seems like a lifetime ago, but it was after our last meeting. I also wanted to just mention tomorrow is Erev Rosh Hashanah for the Jewish New Year, and wish Shana Tova to all members of our Jewish community. And on that note, just also raise that following Rosh Hashanah is Yom Kippur in eight days, which is the holiest, most solemn day in every year, and I know the city doesn't do events on Yom Kippur, but every year, there's different organizations that seem to schedule events, especially nonprofit ones, and often ones that celebrate diversity on Yom Kippur. And it's, I would encourage us to remind organizations to look at what our community and understanding that there are certain days you really should not do events on. Businesses are open, it's not a holiday, I get that, but for diversity organizations to host events on Yom Kippur is, just, does not, does not seem in keeping with their, what they should be doing. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, it looks like we, oh, Councilwoman Middleton.
As someone who is not Jewish, I want to thank Mayor Prette Bernstein for his remarks regarding Yom Kippur and the importance of showing respect to the Jewish community by not participating in events. And I would encourage all of us who are not Jewish to not participate in any event that is held on Yom Kippur.
Thank you. All right, with that, we will adjourn the council meeting. Our next council meeting will be held on Tuesday, September 26th, 2023, at 5:30 PM. See you all then.